The regular meeting of the Favre School Committee Monday, May 10th at the Cus Middle School. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Before I call the roll, the Vice Chair asked me to read and to inform the school committee members that he will not be in attendance at this meeting. He had to be out of town due to a family matter. Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hatzah?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larvee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmission are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Deb, do we have any citizens input?
Yes, we do, Mayor. She's gathering the people now. We've got some special guests tonight.
Okay, Alex, you ready to go, buddy? First up, Rebecca Cuzik, Island Avenue, Fall River.
Good evening. This is a bittersweet moment for me. This is the last time I will be speaking before the committee as FRIA president. I can still recall the first time I spoke before the committee eight years ago. My hands were shaking, my voice was shaking, but I pushed through because I thought the message was more important than my temporary fear of public speaking. At that time, I spoke about the need to increase teacher voice in the district, to give those experts in the field more of a say in the decision-making. I spoke about the need for mutual respect and better collaboration with the administration and the school committee. It was my hope that by recognizing our common purpose, we could strengthen our schools and better serve our students. The roles of president and school committee are really not that different. We're both driven by a deep commitment to public education, and we're both elected by a constituency that we represent. And believe me, I know, sometimes it's hard to look past all the negativity, the misinformation, and the extraneous noise that distract us from the real work. We can and should always strive to do better, but we cannot forget that we have made real progress together. Personally, I am most proud of our unified fight to get the Student Opportunity Act passed. That campaign for funding our schools is proof of what we can do when we row in the same direction, and we will start to see the benefits of that in next year's budget. But this has been a year like no other. COVID presented us with challenge after challenge, and it monopolized so much of our time and our energy. We're slowly starting to swing back to normal, although I suspect COVID has us all thinking of creating a new normal as we move forward. We have finally returned to the table for negotiations for successor agreement, and my goal is to end my term by settling a new three-year contract that honors the work we do and addresses a significant inequity that exists between Fall River and other communities. But we need your support to make that happen. Now is the time for us to consider a bold and innovative approach to be competitive with other surrounding districts. Student learning outcomes improve significantly when districts are able to recruit and retain qualified educators, and I know that you are all too familiar with the costs associated with high staff turnover. I ask that you join us in thinking differently this year about how to solve this problem. It would be great for morale if our educators could end the school year knowing they have a new contract in place. Over the years, we have developed a positive working partnership with this committee. I thank you for always treating me with respect, even when we disagreed, and I hope in turn that you have all felt respected by me. I've tried to stay true to the saying that we can make a point without making an enemy. This experience has really helped me learn, it's helped me grow, and I know it's going to make me a better teacher. The last thing I'm going to say tonight is that I have been so proud to represent the hard-working educators of Fall River. I am honored at the trust that they have placed in me. This change is not the end of something, but rather the beginning of a whole new adventure, and I thank you for your role in the past eight years.
Next up, Darwin Herrera, President Avenue. These are the students from Morton, and I'm assuming that's Kendall Machado.
Good evening. My name is Kendall, and I'm here speaking for my classmates at Morton Middle School. Today, my speech is about the importance of drug abuse and drug education and why it is important for students in this city to have it. In eighth grade, we were introduced to Generation Citizen. Generation Citizen is a project for eighth grade to change and make our community better and safer for our environment. We are studying how the government takes action to address issues at the state and local level. Our main focus was filling the gap of drug education for students. Over the past few months, we have all worked together to find out information on this topic and have found shocking news. It had been stated by Asa Moore, who's DEA resident from New Bedford during a Google Meet that most drug addictions can start by using over-the-counter drugs. We have also had a meeting with Mayor Coogan, thank you for your time, on his opinion on drug abuse and what advice he had to give. To his surprise, he had discovered a whole other side of drug addiction. He taught us other ways to do things without drugs, and we taught him that over-the-counter drugs were just as dangerous. Another recent action we had taken was having a virtual talk with Chris Heron and his experience with drugs and his mindset about them. Due to certain research and his research on a certain website, it had stated in Fall River, 55 residents fatally overdosed on opioids in 2019. Our city ranks fifth for these deaths and has the 10th highest population entity. That was only in 2019. Imagine how much that had changed over the years. It's scary to imagine how much the children were involved due to parental choices with drugs. Recently, we have made posters to represent our issue and researched the dangers of over-the-counter drugs. To this, we have found out there were many dangers to every over-the-counter drug we researched. It had indeed stated that over-the-counter drugs were just as dangerous as illegal ones. This is why having drug-based education in Fall River schools is rather crucial to have. If children learn at a younger age the dangers and the proper use of over-the-counter drugs, we can make a difference for our next generation and the generation before us. We believe Fall River can become a brighter and safer place for our community in the near future with these next steps. We hope you may consider adding these issues into the health or advisory curriculum. Thank you for your time and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ethan St. Martin, Hathaway Street.
Good afternoon. My name is Ethan St. Martin. I'm here to speak to you today about gang violence. We're on my class, 8A at Morton Middle School. What if every day, five to six kids are asked into a gang? What if one of these kids were yours? We are here to discuss the issue of gang violence. Gang violence is a very precarious issue in our youth. It involves acts of terrorism, vandalism, and social injustice. We have addressed this to our superintendent, and he seems to think as though gangs are a big problem that needs to be dealt with. I have found many great programs have untrue caught my attention. The program goes under the name GREAT, which stands for Gang Resistance Education Training. This program has many components, an elementary through middle school component, a summer program, and a family component, but sadly, they are not doing the training as of right now due to the virus outbreak. But our school and many other individuals are working very hard on preventing gang violence, and we want to start on after-school programs. Now, I know what you're thinking, what do after-school programs have to do with preventing gang violence? Well, the problem is, our youth can get bored and find they have nothing to do, so they go on social media. Parents don't always track their children's everyday activities, so their kids could be talking to adults that are in gangs, which could lead to them getting into gang actions and selling drugs, which may lead to domestic violence towards family, friends, and other people. So being an after-school program can help with staying away from gangs and other issues. The problem in our schools is that most of these programs are athletic programs. It may not appeal to students with disabilities or no interest in athletics. Students should be able to go to an after-school book club, arts and crafts club, or a selection of STEM clubs. But when it comes to middle schools and elementary schools, you don't really get that many choices outside of sports. We need more non-athletic, free, after-school programs that offer free transportation. I know there are many amazing programs out there. We are trying to set a new one this year where we will have ex-gang members talk to our eighth grade during advisory. We would like to see this in more grades and more middle schools throughout Fall River, not just Morton. We have been working hard on this issue so that we can be here today saying this speech, but if no action is taken or no one does anything about it, then why are we here speaking today? It would be pointless, and if you don't take action, now you would have missed an opportunity for change. So let's put an end to gang violence and make a change in our society. Like Theodore Roosevelt once said, "Do what you can with what you have where you are." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Colin Dias, Ray Street, Fall River.
Hi, thank you. Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street. Good afternoon, Mayor Coogan, members of the school committee. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to address the important issues facing our school district and, quite frankly, our community. First of all, I think the school district should be ashamed of itself. The school district turned down an invitation from our state delegation to testify at the oversight hearing a few days ago for David Aman. I think it would have been crucial for all parties to be at the table to decipher the findings, the recommendations, to assure that this type of atrocity will not happen in the future. And I just have to ask why someone would think it's a good idea to turn down such an invitation, and I think it's just a testament to the current leadership and the decision-making of the school district. I also want to take a moment to talk about the lack of transparency in the school district. I could write a novel on the lack of transparency, accountability, or integrity in the school department. However, I'll just overview some key points. One, I think it's a shame that this school department willfully disobeys orders from the Secretary of State to produce the report. The report produced had black lines going through the whole entire thing. This school committee does not want the public to see the findings of Attorney Chu. They didn't give appropriate punishment, it's a fact. I wish our elected officials actually cared about the bullying of staff in our school district. If we did, we would have adopted a policy by now.
Okay, with respect to comments about the redacted investigative report, that is, your statements are incorrect. The statements, there was no violation by the committee in terms of releasing the redacted statement. The Secretary of State's office is continuing to review it, and we're continuing to cooperate with them. So just so that the record is straight, there is no violation on the school department's position.
Okay, we want to speak about facts. The school committee, the school department originally declined releasing the whole entire report. I went to the Secretary of State, they said you were wrong, and then they ordered a redacted version of the report, was provided to me. I didn't agree with it, and I went back to the Secretary of State's office, and they said you were wrong again. So let's just keep to the facts, Mr. Attorney.
No, no, they didn't state that we were wrong. They are still reviewing the documentation, and the attorney from the school department, Attorney Joyce, is dealing with them. You can continue.
Okay, you're wrong. Secondly, I find the whole entire evaluation process was not followed correctly. I mean, if you look at August of 2020, there was an evaluation subcommittee meeting that was supposed to lay out the timeline of this year's evaluation of the superintendent. There was an agreement to craft the evaluation with the whole subcommittee, and I went back to watch the meeting myself, and to hold a final meeting of the subcommittee right before it was to be sent to the whole school committee for approval. And what happened? The chairman decided to throw out the plan in place, decided to craft the evaluation behind closed doors, and no finalization meeting took place, though it-
That's improper. It's improper statement.
Be accurate, please.
Can I continue?
If you're accurate.
And it wasn't an inaccurate statement. And the evaluation that came out after we went through the evaluation, I was only provided three of them from Mr. Agiar, I was probably Mr. Agiar's, Mr. Hart's, and Vice Chairman Mark Costa's. I was denied four of them from the rest of the committee members. And I go to the Secretary of State's office again to order it released, and of course, they agreed with me. And then I received the remaining four evaluations with all the names redacted. So we have no idea for the remaining four, who made, who gave what. And the response, the defense for that, was there's going to be retribution if all the names were released. I mean, retribution from who? The voters? I just have no idea. And if we had more transparency, there were some of, and when I look at them, there were some with no answers, there were some with redacted X's, and we used a mathematical formula. And if we're going to use a mathematical formula, you've got to make sure, like, all the answers are correct, and then... I don't know how you can do that if you have double answers or no answers, and I just don't see why that happened. And I just want to end on one more point. I think the reports that came out today, I heard that the new Durfee building project with the roof, this shows more of the lack of oversight in the school department. I heard today the vice chairman talk about the need for oversight on the project today. And what the vice chairman won't tell you is that he missed five meetings in 2020 and is already missing Durfee committee meetings in 2021. I think all our elected officials, if you're serving on the board, you should serve at every single meeting you possibly can. And I just think we just need more from this school committee is honesty, transparency, and accountability. But what we get is redact, executive session, and nepotism, and hopefully, we can see change in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda, there are no recognition awards tonight. Superintendent's report, Dr. Malone.
Thank you. I just want to, the students that came tonight are from Civics Generation Citizen program at Morton. They've been leading, as you know, if you've read the news, they also went to the city council on the issue of plastic bags. Tonight, they brought forward two issues. I've been working with them, the mayor's been working with them, and I just want to say it's great that we have this program. I mean, I know a year ago, we were talking about what are we doing with civics? This is an example of the kind of work that we're doing. And one of the things that automatically came up when they were talking about anti-gang was, you know, the need for more clubs and stuff. And just so you know, these are things that we are also currently bargaining, how to have more of those activities that are covered at the middle level and the elementary level. So it's kind of exciting and fortuitous. At the same time, the vaping curriculum came out, was released today, which ties in exactly to, you know, if you think holistically about drugs, all of the aspects of unhealthy living. So very timely, and I want to thank the students and their teacher and leadership across the middle level for that. Update on Durfee. The roof is 33% complete. That's the repair of the roof. F, F, and E is arriving daily, so that's furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. It's all being installed. It's a very exciting time. We were able to go Friday after hours for a walk-through, and the progress that is being made on a daily basis is incredible. You can see the landscaping and hardscape being now focused on in the exterior as we complete the work in the interior. We're still on time for a July 15th turnover. So at that time, there would be a transition, and we would be able to then do all the work we need to do to get everyone in, prepared and ready for the opening of the school year. That's where we are. I want to thank the mayor, of course, for his leadership on this project. We do have, I don't know, every three weeks, Ken, we have, or their monthly, the school building committee meetings, which is our larger oversight group, and then we have weekly construction meetings. The project, again, it's a $265 million project. It's going as best as it can. When we have issues, they are addressed, and we've been working very well communicating with each other with all sides, from construction to design to project management. Speaking of Durfee, we are scheduled for a June 4th graduation day. We will be running graduation the same way we did this past year. We will have RPA on the field at 11:00 a.m., followed by Durfee on the field at 7:00 p.m. So there's a big window, a larger window of time to say, well, why is that? We wanted to do Durfee under the lights this year, and this will be a day that will be as exciting last year, except the distancing requirements, we'll be able to have more people and less distancing, of course, we'll still be following all the rules and the protocols. Today, if you were following on Twitter, we began a campaign around student attendance. As you guys know, student attendance is an area, now that we're back from the pandemic, that is not meeting our expectations. Over the last several years, we've made tremendous progress in student attendance. We got up into the low to mid 90s, which is a big, a huge accomplishment. And then the pandemic hit, and we're back down into the 80s right now. Now granted, this could be a year unlike any other, and it's tough to say if this is going to be a trend, but we're, we've been meeting. I want to thank school commander McCory for his outreach and leadership on this, and we're starting a very, how do I say, brief, hit, TikTok-style videos and motivational informational clips that have been sent out across schools, schools are developing. Today was the kid principal kickoff. We have a young student, Spencer Borden, who's very serious about being in school every day, and he's telling all those other students about why being in school is so critical. So for us, we know that we've got to reduce chronic absenteeism, but more importantly, we have to increase daily, average daily attendance. And there's all sorts of issues that go into attendance. Now granted, again, this is a tough year. I'm currently writing a report for the committee that I'll have by next Monday, that I'll send you with an analysis of where we are, what's happened this past year, and where we're going, and how with, we now have Dr. Taylor on board and what we're looking at in terms of innovation and oversight and accountability in our attendance operations. So this is something, as you know, you know, the state released a report, and everyone says, oh my God, Fall River, you know, doesn't look good. Look at these other districts. You can't compare other districts because these districts didn't open. So they have perfect attendance because they were remote the whole time. We weren't. We were open. So you see these districts that have 0% of nine or more unexcused absences, but those districts that have 0% are large districts that have worse attendance than us in a regular year, but because they were remote the entire time, not even open for high-needs kids. They got zeros in that category. So it's not an apples-to-apples communication. I've raised this with the department. I'm waiting for feedback from the department because I said, hey, if you release data that's not apples-to-apples and no one understands it, they think they're looking at one thing, but they're looking at something else. So I've made a stink about this, and hopefully, I'll have some follow-up included in my report to you. So stand by. As you know, I promised that I would have this in 10 days, and 10 days I'll have it to you, which is this coming Monday. So after that, I look forward, we have a June meeting. We'll make attendance as a discussion item on the agenda, and we'll have more conversation regarding attendance at that time. That completes my conversation on superintendent's report, Mayor.
Mr. Agiar?
On the Durfee project, I did hear Vice Chair Costa today on the radio talking about if we had to pay teachers or something to come in in the summer. Can somebody put context to that issue, just so that it's more clear on-
Sure. So I brought up, I brought up at the last subcommittee meeting, so I opened, I built one high school in my career, it was when I was in Swanscott, and the way the timeline worked is we moved everyone's stuff, but they still needed time to prepare. Now, of course, it's during the summer, so what we provided was up to four hours of hourly rate pay for teachers to use during the summer to prepare, unpack their things, and be ready for school opening. So if that's something that we may consider, we'll have discussion down the road. If not, we won't, but given the timeline, there will be a need to get our teachers in, not only for the training of all the technology in their rooms and how that works, but also to get the rooms ready for openings. So again, it's just discussion points at this time, and we'll probably have more information to share at the next school committee meeting.
I don't know if you heard the quote, but who was he talking to? It sounded like the guy was at the meeting where he was saying that, you know, if we have to do this, we're not going to pay the money, you know, he's not in favor of paying the money, but then I don't understand who he was talking to. Was that at a meeting that that was discussed?
So I think what you're referring to is, the conversation is talking with the construction managers, if you didn't, you were supposed to get us in by May 15th, and if it's now July 15th, you're going to pay for the time of our teachers' overtime. So that's the conversation, and we're having those conversations now.
Yeah, I mean, that's good context for us to have because I'd agree. If they were supposed to be here by May, you know, logically, July is, you know, they're saying July now, but I would agree with Vice Chair Costa, then if they told us they were going to get it done by May, then we shouldn't be paying.
We agree. We raised this. Vice Chair Costa, of course, I can't speak when he's not here, but he was adamantly in support of making sure that the construction company owns that.
Right, not coming out of the bond or anything, that they're going to-
Right.
If they're delayed, they have to pay.
There you go.
Yeah, if you could just keep us, those that are not on the committee, keep us informed on it, because quite frankly, that puts it in much greater perspective than what I just heard on the radio was that, you know, I agree with you, May, if they said May, right, then-
So I'll have, hopefully, if not before the next meeting, I'll send you something on the Friday as we follow up on this. But please know that the taxpayers' dollars, of course, you know, the vice chair's comments were very clear to make sure that we protect our bottom line and what is owed to us.
And I'm assuming that by him saying that, they must have denied it originally? Because if they just agreed to it, wouldn't it-
It was just brought up for the first time.
So they haven't denied it?
No, it hasn't been, it hasn't been discussed at that, vetted at that level yet because it's just within the past month that that July 15th date has been the make-or-break date.
Yep, I understand. I had a question on the attendance issue, just as a general statement, are all schools just responsible for their own attendance? So each school analyzing attendance, making sure it's accurate, is that a duty that you push onto each school so that-
Each school's responsible for the reporting of it, and then we amass and look at trends and then go back to the schools when we have questions.
But the data comes from them, not from the district?
Yes.
Each school has their own responsibility for that?
Yes.
The last one, I just, and there's an issue that we have later on on the agenda, but you said they launched on Twitter some attendance initiative today?
Yes.
What was the, on what Twitter is it?
So on our Twitter page, the, in the last two weeks, we've done three video clips out of Talbot, and now one out of Spencer Borden for the district about kids talking about the importance of being in school every day.
On their own or on the district, is what I'm saying? Which?
So it's on the superintendent's Twitter.
And that's the district one?
Fall River Public Schools Superintendent.
That's the district one?
Yep. What it says on it is it's from the superintendent's office and managed by the team, the superintendent- the team in the superintendent's office.
All right.
We tweet out, uh, uh, educational-related information, uh, and state government stuff at times, because we're also helping with the, uh, vaccines and getting information out, et cetera.
Right, the, the point of that is so that the parents and everybody gets to see the information.
Only if they follow us.
Yeah. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, Mr. Malone, so I just wanted to go back to the roof. Thirty-three percent complete?
Thirty-three percent complete of the redoing of the roof.
The redoing of it, okay.
Yes.
And we're confident everything's going well, is not, I mean, I know there could be some kind of.
We're confident that I got the best project management on it right now, uh, and, and Suffolk is, is dealing, uh, with this issue with their subcontractors. So those two entities, the construction manager and the subcontractors, uh, that they hired to do the roof, the entirety of it's being replaced. We're going to get a better product, uh, that's being installed, it's a better grade. Uh, I'm on an expert roofer, I know, I know Mr. Hetzer is, uh, but it's a better grade of, of roofing material, and the issue was, it wasn't installed to manufacturer's specifications at the beginning. So that's all been, uh, rectified, and the roof is being reinstalled, and if you drive by, you see it, they're doing it in sections, uh, and, uh, it's been commencing, uh, uh, at a scope that we feel will be able to meet the deadline.
All right, and, and just going back to what, uh, Mr. Agia was talking about as far as the attendance, I know that we had those meetings, uh, for every school, and on the reports, there were some pretty alarming numbers for the absenteeism rate, chronic absenteeism. And I know that, like, you know, four thousand a day from that, that delegation report or letter that we received is, is, is a lot. And I understand the times of the, we're in this pandemic, um, you are right, we had, uh, you know, the, uh, high-needs students, uh, attending, um, and I think that, you know, I'm, I'd be very interested if those, when you have those meetings with Mr. Corey and the other folks, the other team, uh, with Ms. Taylor, um, I'd like to maybe, uh, see, you know, what the, the notes or the, the minutes from that meeting. I just, I'm very concerned about the absenteeism rate, and I know there's other communities that are having that issue as well, some aren't, and you are, you, you're probably right about the, uh, remote learning, um, and I, I understand that, uh, factor as well, but I like to just, you know, deal with Fall River and not compare us to other communities. Like we saw in that letter.
I agree with you whole highly, especially when it's not apples-to-apples. It's misleading information that was reported.
But it is, but it is a lot. I mean, four thousand a day's a lot. Whether, whether they're, whether they're, whether it was hybrid or.
Right. What I'd ask you, Mr. Hart, is wait till you get the report that I'm going to send you on Monday.
Right.
And then look forward to discussion in the January meeting, uh, and we're going to get into the weeds on this, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, yeah, we'll be sharing a ton of information with the committee. Uh, this is, this is our number, you cannot, we cannot close gaps, we cannot be who we want to be unless our kids are here every day. So your role in this is going to be a huge role, uh, this is our number-one priority. We want the kids here every day, it's the only way we're going to close those gaps.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey. I'd just like to set a little bit of precedent on the attendance issue. Pre-pandemic, we had already formed a community-wide committee that was meeting on a regular basis on the direction of Cindy Kudo and the parent center. And we would meet with nurses, we would meet with doctors' offices, we would meet with truant offices, agents, uh, counseling agencies in the city, and I would attend all those meetings, those were not subcommittee meetings, so there are no minutes, those are just organizational meetings. In any case, the, uh, the discussion on attendance was vivid and loud, and we were making great strides at, at addressing the numbers affecting our public schools in Fall River, which have been traditionally high. This is not a campaign issue or a political issue for ninth, for two thousand twenty-one. This is how it's been in our city for a long time, and it's been an issue highlighted, especially when they built these neighborhood schools, which are not demographically, uh, uh, what I say in the proximity-wise, to a lot of neighborhoods that are on the outlying areas of these schools that contribute to some of our numbers. That being said, we were addressing this issue pre-pandemic spot-on, then we got hit with the pandemic. So this year, the numbers are a phenomenon, and I refuse to look at this year's numbers with any seriousness. I think it's callous, and I think it's callous on part of the Department of Education to hold accountability to these numbers this year, given the circumstances that we've all endured. Let's not forget, we had a community-wide effort last summer for the reopening of schools. This has been a community effort, and, and the burden isn't just on our school departments, it's on the parents of this city to make sure their children wake up in the morning and come to school. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I, I didn't say it was callous, okay? Um, it's an issue, and it's getting bigger and bigger each year. I haven't seen these numbers since I've been on the school committee four or five years ago. Four thousand a day's a lot. I don't care if we're in a pandemic or we're not, we've got to do something about it. When the kids come back to school, maybe it'll improve, but, uh, I'm not talking about, you know, election two of twenty twenty-one, I'm talking about the school kids going back to school, uh, approving the achievement gap, making sure that we do the right thing and get the students back to school. I agree, there's no doubt about it, that the majority of the issue, uh, in some instances is the, the, the parents got to get their kids to school. There's no question about it. I do it, you, you did it, we all, we, we all do it here, okay? Some, some don't, and that's where we got to go. We got to go to that particular issue, that's one of the issues. But right now, it's very high, and I'm, I'm confident that it's going to get better when we get out of this pandemic, but right now, you got to pivot. You said for the pre-pandemic was good, pandemic was bad, we got to pivot into the pandemic and we should, we need to deal with it, and that's what we've got to do, that's what we've got to do. I know we're go, we're going to be doing it. I'm looking forward to the report with, uh, Mr. Malone. What's, is, is Malone something wrong?
Hmm?
Oh, you're looking at me like I'm not making sense.
I'm thinking.
Oh, okay. Um, so that, that's what I, I yield, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Agia, then Mr. Corey.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you to my colleague on my right, it sounds like Mr. Corey was saying that pre-pandemic, we had a good attendance task force led by Ms. Kudo, and I think somebody else, I'm not sure who. And my question is, is this just a continuation of that? What happened to all of the good interactions that we had, uh, prior to the, this new situation? It sounds like something's new, and my question is to Mr. Corey.
Yes, uh, Mr. Agia, I'd be happy to, uh, I haven't, uh, seen a community-wide meeting yet, it's only because schools just probably just reopened, so don't want to, I can't truly answer that question, but I can say that we've already met behind doors to discuss ideas on how to ramp up a new campaign, and I'm sure it's going to continue to be a, a growing effort.
Yeah, on the old, the old campaign pre-pandemic?
Yeah.
Were there things that were just not implemented that were ready to go?
No, absolutely.
That anybody hadn't?
Our truant offices are working so hard, uh, they're performing outreach, um, they're not, they're not even being responded to by so many of the parents in the district. They're really working hard and almost scratching their heads sometimes, just trying so hard to get more kids into school, the kids that have been chronically absent in our records.
And these meetings now, are there truant offices on it?
There's, there's no meetings yet, we've just kicked off the effort, we had a, we had a meeting last week, and, uh, it seemed very promising because we're just going to try to fashion a campaign, uh, that public will see on, on, in the media, you know, to try to like rev people's interest.
Yeah, no, I apologize.
That's all last week's meeting was.
I thought you were saying that you were on a committee that there's, there's been meetings. My feeling is, is that truant offices need to be at the table with their voices heard, and not just one person out of the bunch, and when there's advice or there's things that need to happen and they get presented, they need to be implemented or brought to this committee. So I'm asking you, Mr. Corey, only because you're the, you're a committee member on it, so I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just saying that we don't know some of those things, but the people that were running it for the last year busting their butt and all that shouldn't be kicked to the side as well. Because a lot of people were doing a lot of good hard work, and they shouldn't be kicked to the curb. They should not be kicked to the curb, I want to make sure that's very clear, that that's the way I feel.
Yes.
And we need more truant offices to be heard in those meetings. With that, I yield, thank you for your info.
Thank you, Mr. Agia, for your input. Uh, I'm sure that it's going to get back to that level again, and I'd have to say that the committee was very wholesome. Housing was at the table, uh, a lot of agencies were at the table, doctors' offices were at the table. They were very awesome meetings because we developed a wide perspective on the why of the absenteeism, you know, so it's, it's, it's a head-scratching issue. Thank you, I yield.
Dr. Malone?
Yeah, just, uh, just, just a confusion. The community-based task force that focused on attendance, it just hasn't met because of the pandemic. That's going to be back up. But prior to the pandemic, there was, um, uh, public messaging, public service announcement, if you will, and we developed a set of videos, but it was the old way of thinking about videos. It was like talking at you, and they were long. So what we thought of in the last couple months was, given how hot kids are getting small bits of information, we wanted to get something out more quickly. So we put together these small twenty, thirty-second, uh, video clips of kids talking about the importance, and we're just been sending those out. The full committee will be back up and operational shortly. The attendance officers are at the table, there's been several meetings, uh, with attendance officers since Dr. Taylor came in, with her, plus one with me, where we've been meeting and talking about needs and things that we have. Our investment in our, 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 our program design is, is, uh, at the heart of everything that we're doing. We're fully committed to listening to all sides and all advice pieces, if you will, uh, and then I'll probably be bringing back to this committee, uh, some items for, uh, purchase on some things that we need, uh, to help our attendance officers, uh, do a better job. But drilled down now, Maria Ponce and, and, uh, and Sharice and, uh, and Mike Losh and, um, Tracy Curly and others, uh, working with our site-level principals now, they've disaggregated all this data, uh, to really be able to make some huge headway into what, uh, what's the actual, uh, you know, looking at the data. Some of this stuff was kids that were out on, that had to be quarantined, and how does that count against us when we quarantine them? So if the reporting of the attendance, uh, it's all going to be in this report, stand by, we'll have more discussions, and, and I'm, I, I do want to say that one of the highlights of being superintendent here, uh, is that this committee really does take, uh, so serious the issue of student attendance, and this is, it's been the Achilles' heel of Fall River for, for, for the last twenty years, and we were making progress. I think we'll get back to that, uh, when we, when we get back into the normal of this coming school year.
May I just ask for two requests?
Mr. Agia.
So if I could, just so I'm clearer in my head about committees and all this stuff, if we can get a list of the folks that were on the attendance task force committee from last year that was referred to here, just so I can get an idea of which, who the players were that were on it. The other piece of it is, if I can get a, a list of how many children have we actually picked up with the vehicles that we purchased to, you know, be used, utilized by the attendance officers? If we can get a report, I don't, I, I'm not asking for that information now, but if we can get a report indicating, uh, how that program's working as well, because I do think that's a part of helping the attendance. With that, I yield, thank you.
Nothing further? Okay. Item number five is a student comment, student delegate report. None tonight. Next is the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve. Minutes of March eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second? I have a motion to approve six-one, approval of minutes from March eighth. I have a motion, second, discussion, hearing none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Co, um, Mr. Agia?
Here. Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes.
Mr. Cogan, may I? I'll, I'll take, uh, motion to approve six-point-two for April twelfth, six-point-three for April twenty-eighth.
Okay, we have two approvals on the next two sets. Let's do the first one first, on four-twelve, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on four-twelve? Hearing none, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes, and on four-twenty-eight, I have a motion, do I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes. Item number seven is a rec, approval of the travel request. We have one travel request tonight.
Motion to approve travel request seven-point-one for.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on this travel request? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes. Item number eight, acceptance of donations.
Motion to approve, uh, eight-point-one, acceptance of donations.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, uh, Deb, please, uh, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
Just a question on the, um, I, I see a lot of donations from the Greater Fall River Development Corp., which I think is great. I'm curious, though, when we get donations for things that I, as one member, I thought we had all of this stuff for, like, technology with the, you know, increases in money, do these get checked before to know whether we've already, you know, do we really need these, or is this something that we should be taking care of in our budget?
This is a grant process that the Fall River Development Corp., uh, uh, provides for local, uh, school systems, so it's a competitive grant, uh, each year, uh, we share that with, uh, schools, and then schools apply. They accept some and they reject others, they mostly reject ones that they say, we should be funding our own, which is a lot of around, uh, uh, technology and, and things of that nature.
Yeah, so if we look at certain things like, uh, the boards, interactive boards and stuff, I'm assuming that we don't have those in all of our rooms at current. If somebody's requesting that, I'm assuming we don't have that.
Right.
And is that in our plan to do anyway? So I'm trying to figure out if that, if that's a need in one of these schools or whatever they put in, I'm assuming that's a need across the district.
Right, we keep, we keep trying to put more and more technology in all our rooms. The goal is to have the same setup we have in these new high school rooms across all of our rooms.
That's what I'm saying, so we're just not there yet, is my point.
We're not there yet, right.
So it's not like they're getting, like, extras, they're getting the basics, and we got to try to.
Right, they're getting, but it's also specialized, so I mean, I could share a couple of the proposals, but it's, like, uh, people write pretty, uh, innovative proposals for things that they need. The Fall River Development Corp. reviews them and then awards some, uh, based on, uh, The Fall River Development Corp. reviews them and then awards some based on what they think is our responsibility and what they think is extracurricular, if you will.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. A donation's great, I'm not saying that. All I'm suggesting is, and I asked this question last time, if we get GoFundMes or whatever they, it's not a GoFundMe, the other thing that donors choose and stuff?
Right.
That I think at some point, especially now that our budgets are taking care of a lot of this stuff, I think we should have a process where we don't, we don't go out for donors' choose for things like iPads or Chromebooks. We've got Chromebooks, or the same thing here. I think there's certain things that we should step up and...
I don't disagree with you, but a lot of these people do this stuff on their own and just do it.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I think we need a policy from the administration to say, "Before you go out and ask for something, we should know whether it's something that we should be providing." We went through this years ago when we had limited budgets. We used to have people asking for paper, pencils, this, copy paper, and all that. It got to the point where we had to say, "Those are things that we need to provide." So if there's no control over it, they can just ask for anything they want? I mean, what sense does it make to have anybody say, "Let's go out and do a donors' choose project for Chrome, 10 Chromebooks for our school?" What sense does that make when we have Chromebooks for every student now? I just don't understand why we would allow that.
Well, I mean, I think some people do some things on their own.
And you don't see, you just let them go, so people just can do whatever they want?
I don't know what authority I have, Kevin. Now, if we accept it, then they're ours. So if someone puts a thing in for donors' choose for 30 things and then brings it to the school committee, and the school committee accepts it, those devices are no longer the teachers, they're the systems. But if you didn't bring it forward, it's accepted as a gift, it's still the teachers. So this is an issue in every single district I've ever worked in, who owns what and who asks for what.
Right, I don't see that being very complicated. Before, a teacher in a school or anybody has to ask, they should go to their principal and say, "I'd like to ask for this." Principal says, "No, we've got computers for everybody, try something different." Like you steer them in a direction.
I think that happens as well.
You're saying that, it is what it is.
No, no, I didn't say that, Kevin.
They do what, you can't do anything about it.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
That's what I heard.
Well, you heard?
Well, maybe you can try to repeat it so that we can understand. Is there a process in place to...
I just ask that we remain civil.
Yep.
And I will answer your response civilly.
I would like to get it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So there's a process in place where people ask, you know, "Can I get X?" And it goes up, you know, the principals look at their issues. If it makes it to our level, we approve what we can when we have money. It's also tied into our strategic rollout of technology across the district, so there's a lot of this communication going on. At the same time, for example, before COVID, people wanted flexible seating. There was a lot of teachers that did donors' choose for flexible seating that was adopted into their rooms for all sorts of stuff in classrooms. We didn't at the time, we weren't purchasing furniture. So that stuff was coming from the teachers and we'd say, "Look, we didn't, you know, it's not part of our budget right now." So that would be something where donors' choose made sense. But in terms of technology, there is, you know, teachers ask their principals, "This is what I want to do." Principals say, "Hey, we can do this," or "We can't." Now, this money that you're referring to just came out in the past two months, Kevin. So a lot of the stuff that you're talking about, these were written four or five months ago.
Yep.
So if you're talking about the EESR money and the Student Opportunity Act money that we have now, that we're going to be able to do a whole much more capital investment, that's just come to our attention in the last two months.
Right, we've had pretty, pretty...
We've had good budgets, but it wasn't, we didn't know that we had, you know, $70 million.
Exactly, now it's a little over the top. Like, I get it, and I'm not suggesting otherwise. All I'm suggesting is that, in my opinion, my personal opinion, when I see things out there for a school, and they say donors' choose, a teacher's trying to get some money for something, as people see that in the public, in the community, they look at that as, "Well, I have to give this to this teacher because the district is not providing it." That's where my perspective's coming from. So I'd like to at least have the principal or yourself or whoever say, "No, this is something that's a little above and beyond that we don't normally do," so that we don't get looked at in the community because we hear it from people. "Why are you doing donors' choose for Chromebooks?" Or whatever it is. I'm just trying to avoid that by saying we should have a process. Sounds now like you're saying there is some sort of a principal approval.
What I should do for you is, why don't I create a memo to the committee that I can put in your Friday email that explains what the current process is? And once you read that, if you've got more questions in terms of like, maybe we should have a policy in place at something, but let's, let me give you the answers first.
Yeah, that's fine, just, I just was curious if there was something.
So I'll do that.
I want the Greater Fall River Development Corp. to give whatever they can, and we appreciate it, just, you get my message. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Deb, I had a motion and a second, can you call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Dr. Malone, would you please read the donation?
Sure. From the Greater Fall River Development Corp. to Spencer Boardman Elementary School, $27,000. From Greater Fall River Development Corp. to Fonsaka Elementary School, $25,935. From the Greater Fall River Development Corp. to Morton Middle School, $25,540.53. From the Greater Fall River Development Corp. to Resiliency Prep Academy, $20,000, $20,748. From Fall River, Greater Fall River Development Corp. to Tansy, $20,000. From Greater Fall River Development Corp. to Watson Elementary School, $12,000. From Bay Coast Bank to the Fall River Public Schools, $10,000. From the Greater Fall River Development Corp. to the Fine and Performing Arts, $9,616. From Greater Fall River Development Corp. to the Henry Lord School, $9,207. And from donors' choose to Maternal Elementary School, 75 copies of the book, Maniac McGee. We thank our philanthropic sponsors for their support.
Item number nine, we have a number of contracts.
Approve, vote to, I'm sorry, motion approved contracts?
Second with a question.
I have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the first contract, Government Connection Incorporated, kind of along the same lines here. It says Chromebooks and Google licenses for Cus and Vivere's. I thought the middle schools were completely outfitted with devices from Verizon, so, you know, we have now, we have double the amount of Chromebooks. Just curious what that contract's for.
Hi, Mr. Hudson. As you know, a few months ago, the three schools that were ELT schools, Vivere, Sylvia, and Cus, applied for, they had ELT money available, and they encouraged all schools to apply for funding for a summer programming as well as supplies and materials that they needed. So each of those schools actually are buying more Chromebooks to have for assessments to be in the building as additional supplies with that ELT money.
Okay, I'm just curious, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Anything further on contracts, please? I have a motion, a second, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Hart, please.
Just real quickly, we, I know I made the motion for number eight, and it was seconded. Did we vote on it? I don't know if we missed that vote, or...
Eight, one?
Yeah, we did.
We did, okay. Because I know Kevin, we voted before you read the motion.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Item number 10 is approval of grants, we have five grants.
Motion approved grants.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the grants? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, this was a discussion earlier tonight, the vote to approve school choice for our outer district students in grades six to 12 and non-resident students in grades K-5 for the Fall River Public School employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 21-22 school year as presented by Dr. Malone.
Motion to approve 11.1, school choice.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, anything further on the school choice? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.2 is a presentation by Coaching for Change, as presented by Marquis Taylor, co-founder and president. Mr. Taylor.
Tonight, we're going forward, Marquis Taylor, who's been working with us for, I believe, four years now, in a great program called Coaching for Change. Tonight, he's going to present to the committee what the program is and how work is expanding across the district. Two prongs, and also I'll bring up Principal Bronhardt and also Drew Woodward as well, Director of Guidance.
Thank you for joining us, Marquis. Let it rip.
Thanks for having me. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how you doing?
Good, good.
That's a good idea.
So I just, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I've worked closely with Dr. Malone, Dr. Bronhardt, and Andrew on designing Coaching for Change to be specifically tailored to Fall River Public Schools. On the, on the, on the beginning, on the front part of Coaching for Change, our focus was really providing student supports with three major goals. Adding 150 hours to schools that didn't have ELT learning, bringing 10 diverse, talented college students to the, to each school, and also providing additional academic, social, emotional support with the idea of potentially creating a talent pipeline for the district. What we've been able to do with, at Henry Lord and at Taubit is designing, or co-designing, project-based learning that connects to common core, but also allows kids to feel more connected and included in school. So some of our programs that we've designed is a food truck business where the entire purpose was around kids' understanding and better learning fractions, while also connecting and having young people understand different cultures. So we had one group create a, like a Caribbean jerk chicken, another group created buffalo, buffalo chicken wings, right? But they all cooked it in the building, they created budgets, they designed the food trucks. And what we also were focused on was just building community. So we were able to partner with Blount Soups, and they were able to bring their staff members in to act as consultants, to talk to the kids about what does it mean to design a food truck? And not only did their Blount Soups teams come in and talk to the kids, they also helped us provide a Thanksgiving Day dinner for a lot of the young people who hadn't, who wouldn't have a Thanksgiving or had never seen a turkey on, at Thanksgiving time. So it's something that we've really designed, and we started the program off with only 15 kids, and by the end of the year, we had grown to 65, and we had an attendance rate of 97% of the kids that were part of our program. And so while we saw so much growth with the kids, we also saw something like really happen that wasn't our initial intention. We had college students who were sociology majors, Spanish majors, that were black, Latinx, that weren't expecting or even thinking about becoming educators. And after their experience in Henry Lord, working side by side, they said, "You know what, this education thing is kind of interesting. I want to explore and learn more about it." And so of those 10 initial college students we brought in, three were hired as substitute teachers, and one was hired as a full-time teacher. And so while that wasn't the intention, a byproduct of creating food trucks and inspiring kids also inspired college students to want to become educators. And so as we grow within the district, our thought process is, how do we bring more diverse, talented young people into schools to provide supports, help them feel more connected, and just get engaged and motivated? And with COVID and as I heard about attendance, who better to do that than college kids? Right? College kids who are 18 to 21 years old, that they don't really know what they want to do themselves. But having the opportunity to work under amazing leaders and teachers from the district is a really solid, amazing opportunity. And this, this school year alone, we were able to get really creative around virtual mentorship. So we were able to identify college students from UCLA, Dartmouth College, and also Adelphi in North Carolina, and T in Tulane, who all came virtually through Google Classroom to Henry Lord Public School. And they're doing really cool projects, like creating vlogs, they're creating blogs, they're designing community-based art beautification, like cleaning up graffiti, all with their college mentors. And so the college mentors are both education majors and marketing majors, and they're having really deep discussions around, "How do we write a script? How do we film our vlog that we're doing today?" But then also thinking about it from a marketing standpoint, "How do we go from zero viewers to 14 viewers?" Right? So it's this really engaging, interactive, interactions that are happening that are allowing young people to see themselves as educators and also seeing themselves on college campuses. And during this process, our college students, or not, sorry, our middle school students are going on college campuses. And while we're focused on getting them access and exposure to college, they're really excited about eating chicken fingers and having all-you-can-eat ice cream. So it's a really fun experience where kids are really engaging and connecting on college campuses, or sorry, on school campuses. And now our next goal, as we think about moving forward, is how do we become more intentional around using after-school and in-school as a tool to not only connect with kids, but also build a diverse talent pipeline, especially as we look at all of the initiatives around diversity, equity, inclusion, and we look at the staffing profile of Fall River Public Schools, which is 94% white, when there's a growing population of a student body that's 64%. So how do we, how do we find meaningful, intentional ways of diversifying the staff, understanding that there's not going to be a mass retirement or a lot of people leaving, right? So how do we build interest in education? Because even when we look at the School of Ed, it's 80% female, 90% white. So we can't just go our traditional ways of trying to recruit, how do we use after-school summer and school-based programming to inspire the next generation that are diverse? And so I would love to open it up and have a dialogue, because I think that if we can, Dr. Malone and I, we've talked about this, is growing to being able to put 15 college students in each middle school. That would be, that would allow us not only to increase staffing, but it also increases the pool. So if we're able to put, bring 125 diverse college students, and we were able to hire 20% of them, that, this is a really powerful strategy here, and it's not just about a marketing campaign or a social media campaign, it's around college kids connecting with middle school kids in a really powerful, meaningful way that helps them stay on track.
Thank you for that, Marquis. That's a great presentation. I think I saw an action last year, Amy, when we went to the school, and I was duly impressed after-school hours to see how many kids were engaged. As an educational and social-emotional learning quotient, it's spot-on, it's a great program, and it's hands-on. I like the idea of college interns, and I'm glad that kids from all over the country piped in on Google. But I was wondering about the college interns, could we draw from our local pool? Can we draw like from Bridgewater and from UMass Dartmouth and UMass Amherst and maybe Rhode Island College, local kids, you know, who are hip to the area, know the area really well, but, but still represent, you know, the diversity that education is crying for right now? Fall River is a roots city. You know, it was established back in the days of the post-industrial revolution, and it drew immigrants primarily from Western Europe and those parts of the world, and a few from China primarily. But now, since the Vietnam War era, we've become a much more diverse community with all of the multitude of immigration that's affected this community over the past 30 years or so. And now there's a crying need to see that reflected with teachers in the classroom. And I hope that we're going to be able to address that matter through collective bargaining, by raising our standard here in Fall River, as well as trying to recruit more. I'm sure your program will give us a direct pipeline of recruits, and we're going to need other programs as well. But with that, I'm very pleased with the overall holistic quotient of education going on inside with those kids. The one thing that's missing, though, Amy, is there's no gibbet in that menu, you know, having that gibbet or chicken swarm, or maybe a couple of Polish pedogies, we're going to need a little bit of that, too.
Don't make me break all my kebab.
All right. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I'm assuming Dr. Bronhardt and Mr. Woodward would agree with those sentiments, but I, if you have something to share to what Mr. Taylor said, I'd appreciate hearing it.
So I think I, from an actionable standpoint on the ground, right? We talk about recruiting talent, and we talk about recruiting to work in our schools. The work of an educator is hard, and if we think that we can just recruit kids off of college campuses and/or even just from recruitment drives, it's just not actionable to think that we're going to have success stories the way that we would hopefully anticipate. And one of the things that came out of Coaching for Change was, I recognized in the building, I had all of these college kiddos that were making unbelievable relationships after-school, how can I transfer that to during the school day? We did transfer them into the school day, and they were not as successful as we wanted them to be because they didn't have the training to be able to step into a substitute role and be successful. And so after we stumbled a couple of times and didn't get the outcomes we were looking for, that was when Marquis and I began to talk about, how do we embed a training program so that we can develop these teachers, put them, develop these potential teachers? And thinking about potential teachers, there's a wide range of folks that graduate from college with degrees that they do not have a direct job to link into. When we think about folks, maybe not right now because of the licensure situation with DESI, but when you think about folks who can't pass teachers' tests, they get themselves caught up in the testing cycle, and then they just quit on education because they couldn't navigate the test. So there are folks out there that with the right support and the right modeling and the right training, they could be successful a little more quickly if we can front-load with those supports. So the fellowship program that Marquis is speaking of and the literature speaks to is really doing exactly that. How do we create another opportunity for Fall River Public Schools teachers to exercise leadership? If we look at the turnaround practices and where schools are really successful, it is when there is a distributed leadership, where teachers have a voice, and their excellence is also celebrated and marketed. But they don't want to be administrators. They don't want to be the next teacher coach. They want to stay in the classroom, have their effect with kids, but also be celebrated and honored for the work that they do. So the fellowship program will intentionally bring in college mentors, who really are juniors or seniors in college, who are navigating to either be a teacher and couldn't pass the test, so now they need a backdoor in to get experience and a little more time. Or maybe they're folks who are in a non-traditional major, psychology, sociology, fill in the blanks. We know many others, where there isn't that direct pipeline to a job. How can we bring these folks in while they're still in college, navigating their exit point? Give them an experience in the Fall River Public Schools alongside of a teacher for a couple of days a week. In addition to that, we'll get, we will support them with an SEL experience so they can navigate relationships with kids, they can work independently with different groups of kids and teachers, and then naturally transition into the school department through the many opportunities of substituting, paraprofessionals, and/or then teaching positions if they are ready and they meet the qualifications that we need to be able to be certified. So I'm really excited because I feel like this could be a next real natural extension of the Coaching for Change partnership. We have already seen dramatic and awesome outcomes for after-school programming at Lord specifically, and I know Talbot this year launched it, even though it was COVID. But I'll tell you, I mean, we're carrying on. We are, we are doing our end-of-year project as we speak. And my kiddos are still moving on with the program, and we've moved it after, we've moved it in-person after-school so we can kind of cultivate that after-school experience yet again for our kids. And the other part that's really awesome is that Coaching for Change as an organization has really been a true partner. So as we went back and forth negotiating what was going to work for us and what wasn't going to work for us, Marquis was always that two-way partner, going back and forth, breaking things down so that the outcomes were still what we wanted, even though the journey to get to those outcomes might have been different from inception of the idea to the end. So I see the fellowship model as being something, yes, that can start at Lord, but then also how do we navigate and push this out so that all teachers in the Fall River Public Schools can have that opportunity to increase teacher leadership, model their excellence, and from there we can build the next generation of our teacher pipeline here in Fall River. As one angle, because I do think that there's many other entry points that we should continue to explore.
Mr. Woodward?
Yeah, I would just add that one of the exciting things about expanding our partnership with Coaching for Change is the ability to bring a diverse group of college students on campus and exposing them to different roles within Fall River Public Schools. So we have the fellowship model where students will kind of go through an exploratory kind of period where they're working with different teachers, but also getting an opportunity to work on parent outreach events and under the direction of vice principals, principal, or a school counselor. Also bringing a diverse group of college students into summer programming and helping with project-based learning and enrichment activities to support student growth under the leadership of our great teaching staff. So these are all different ways to expose college students to the different roles, the teachers, the counselors, the technicians, the paraprofessionals, the instructional liaison supports, so that they can consider a future in education in Fall River.
May I ask if, Mr. Taylor, what was the, I believe that the district supported the program financially at the end of last year, the carry, do you know that amount?
For our last school year, it was fifty-five thousand.
And that was like recovered this year because I think we paid it from the?
Yes.
You know, I just think we got a, we got a real good bang for our buck, you know? I'm impressed by what Dr. Brownard was saying about how the program has evolved, how you've worked well with them. To me, it's really like a no-brainer to try to expand the program. So when I look at things from one year to the next, I think you're poised to double what you did the current year just by, you're going to do it whether we give you the money or not, in my opinion, because I know how you all work. So I'd like to make a motion that we double the amount for the next year's budget for your program to, from fifty-five to a hundred and ten thousand. And I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Second.
On the second, Mr. Aguirre's done.
No, I'm done. I just made a motion, and I think it's something we should all support because you're doing great work.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, but I did have a question. Go ahead, Paul.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, no, I agree with Mr. Aguirre. I think, I looked at your website, and there's a lot of good things I see here on the website. And where else are you? Do you, what other districts do you, is it just regional or is it Fall River?
So right now, we're regional.
Yeah.
We're in Taunton, Fall River. We're in Metco Program in Lexington. We're currently expanding into Providence and Central Falls and potentially Bristol Warren.
And I saw on there where you actually, I think you go to the students that you're drawing from, at Stonehill, UMass, and Bridgewater?
Yes.
Right, right now?
And Bristol Community College.
Oh, B C State, okay. Now, when you do that, are the, are the students, how, how open are they to come and, you know, and help and maybe do something that they probably didn't even think that they were going to do until you guys approached them?
That, I mean, that's a part of our, that's a part of our entire marketing recruitment strategy, is identifying college students who are Spanish majors or sociology majors. And we don't sell them on the idea of becoming an educator. We sell them on the idea of changing young people's lives.
Right.
So through mentoring and through tutoring, that's where we're getting them hooked, but it's the relationships that they're forming with the teachers, the relationships they're forming with the kids, and the growth that they're seeing, that's where their passion for education comes in. And we're specifically recruiting non-ed majors because that's where the diversity is. And we're also working with a large population of students that have been overlooked or have had a negative experience with school, so they have a perception of what school is. But then once they have the opportunity to teach and lead and see a different pathway, it exposes them to something different. Like one example, we had a young lady who just at the beginning of the program screamed and yelled at the kids because that's what happened to her as a student. And with that teacher talking to her about, you know, this is about relationships. It's about pulling a kid to the side and not embarrassing them. It really made a major difference because she also herself saw a different way of leading, and you saw her just reshape and reform how she approached kids in general. And now she's pursuing a degree in education, and she's a, she's a junior at UMass Dartmouth.
That's really good. I did also see on here the, the actual, like, you had the statistics as far as like the attendance.
Yeah.
The behavior, scores, aptitude for math as well. And it seems like, from the numbers that you've, that you've, that you've taken the survey with, or however you did that, it seems like everything has gone up in those particular categories.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the work that we're doing, it's really strategic in how we're identifying it, and it falls under Dr. Brownard's leadership and what we're trying to accomplish in her school improvement plans. So it's not as if Coaching for Change is operating on an island. We're trying to get as integrated with the school as possible and just trying to make sure that we're part of the culture, and we're, and we're, and we're being consistent for kids.
And when you say in here, "culture over curriculum," what do you mean by that specifically?
It's, it's a matter of like the language, it's the matter of how we're greeting kids, it's the rules for being consistent for kids after school, right? So like if we came in and we said, you know, we're going to meet in the cafeteria, but the school has a different set of rules, it causes chaos, right? Because a building has seven hundred kids and has its policies, it's right, so like it, we're trying to fit within that space. And then also making sure that like our, our college students have the same experience, shared background and cultural experience as the kids that they're working with.
All right, well, no, I, I'm looking forward to it. I thank, you know, Mr. Aguirre for making that motion, and, you know, the superintendent for getting you guys together here, and Amy and everybody here. I'm looking forward to it. So thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
I do have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hudson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I support the motion, but I'm curious, we're talking about expanding it to all the middle schools. So is that enough money? I mean, what do you need from this committee to move forward with the plans? Because they sound great, and I think the level of success you've had already speaks for itself, and I'd love to see it expanded. So what, what do you need? I mean, is it just doubling the budget for next year, or is it something more?
So I think the key is, is if we can get a three-year kind of partnership, because what we know and what we've learned is that we need a year to make mistakes and to pivot and to learn so that it becomes, and having a lot of, a lot of deeper conversations to institutionalize it. Because one of the things we're also learning is that we can, we can flood schools with diverse talent, but then if they're not converted into staff, that's a lost opportunity, right? So I think it's, it's a combination of making sure that this is a sustainable program over time, and then also making sure that it's, it's systematic, that we're paying attention to the conversion rates of college student that works in a summer program, the conversion to after-school, the conversion to the fellowship program, really paying attention and understanding, where are we losing kids? Why are we losing them? So I think, I think it's, it's just being able to be flexible for that. And so that was a long-winded way of saying a three-year contract with, as we grow, the money to support that, which on average is about thirty-five hundred per college student.
Okay. So, well, just a few comments and maybe a question for the superintendent and maybe even yourself, Mr. Taylor. So each year, when you seek funding from us, do you put in a request? Do we put in the request with you? Like, how does that work? And could we, next year, I know we've talked about doubling, and there's a motion that I'm going to support, but maybe you present us with, you know, different options, when one of those options is a three-year, long-term thing that we can support next year's budget and make happen?
Yeah.
With that, I yield, and I'll?
Yeah.
So, Marquis, correct me if I'm wrong, you've been with us for about three years now?
Yeah.
So the first year was funded by the Kraft Family Foundation. And then after that, we took on the funding roles we've done with other projects. But because this is much more than, for example, the Reengagement Center that People Inc runs with us at RPA, because the, we're actually also developing the pipeline of candidates into the system, prospective candidates. So our goal is to continue to grow and move to the five middle schools as we're, as we're talking about. And at the same time, it's, in my, you know, we come every year with funding, but, you know, my commitment's at least three years with, with what we're doing here. So, so if you fund it, maybe you amend the motion that you funded it a hundred and ten for the first of three years, and each year you gotta, we bring back for, you know, a minimum of a hundred and ten, because if it's going to be another fifty beyond that. But this is something that, it works for our kids, and it works for our future adults, and it's also a real, like, look at what Dr. Brownard's been able to do without ELT on the south side of the city with all the cool program that she's done there. So this ties into what the middle school kids talked about earlier, something to do after school. That's, that's at their own site, that they don't have to, you know, get to. So, so I'm committed to every year, you know, we've, we've been able to have really good investments using title dollars. But this to me is operational. So, so my commitment is to fund it each year somehow, using the monies that we can use, and, and I'm not opposed to a three-year commitment. Granted, it would be up to the committee as to each year having that conversation. So I'm a big fan, and personally and professionally, Marquis and I talk a lot about this idea of a pipeline. And really, this, this program has evolved. We had an aha moment one day in the office about, we're not talking about, what we're talking about is that untraditional path of, of, of college kids who aren't majoring in education, getting inspired. Because one day they showed up at Henry Lord and realized they could be good at something. They could be majoring in business, they could be majoring in something else. But all of a sudden, you realize, whoa, this is a pathway for me. And then we're going to provide a job opportunity so you can build that next level. The goal, you know, and Marquis has been working on this for the last couple of years, is, how does he get to scale across the state? Because all of these urban districts and the suburban districts like you're working in, like Lexington, are all struggling with the same issue. There's a small pool of people coming out of ed schools. We got to expand the tent. So provide them with the training that they need so they can do, you know, lesson planning and all this stuff. But we want to get more people that didn't necessarily think that education teaching was going to be their pathway. That's these non-traditional candidates that, once they learn how to do the relational stuff, you know, the, all doors are open.
Mr. Corey?
Just a brief question, Mr. Chair, to Dr. Brownard. As far as the students or the children who have been involved in Coaching for Change, what has been the overall affect of these students for being in that program? How does it look like around your school?
So initially, it served exactly the purpose it was intended to, to be an after-school environment, opportunity to keep kids after-school, where kids foster different relationships with each other, different relationships with teachers, and then adding in the mentor piece just made it flourish. I mean, overall, the climate and culture at Lord is certainly something that we pride ourselves on. We've worked really hard to really flip just the whole environment around, and Coaching for Change was a piece of that. So they have, Coaching for Change has certainly had an influence all around. I mean, you know, it's kind of hard to gauge right now because we, we fell off short the end of last year with COVID, and now we've been only under COVID under this year.
I get that.
But during the high functioning times, the program was and has been a major staple in our ability to keep our middle school kids connected to something different. And I think that's also the other thing, is that the program is different in the sense that the after-school project that kids work on is developed by their teachers. They surveyed kids kind of going into it. So it wasn't just a project-based learning taken out of the sky that some adults thought was cool. It was really even put together with influence from the kids so that when time came, they bought into it, and they remained, and attendance has always been good. And it's something that the kids seek out. It started as a seventh and eighth grade experience. And then because middle school athletics became a real competition at Lord for us to get kids to participate in everything. And so then we shifted it to sixth grade, and it really opened up some doors for sixth graders in a different light, too. So we've seen a lot of pros, a lot of pros with the program and the flexibility to be able to make the program meet the school's needs, I think, has also been one of the most beneficial pieces when working with an outside provider. Because sometimes those outside providers have to meet their own criteria that might go against the schools, and then you find yourself pigeonholed to make a decision that you wouldn't otherwise make. And up until this point, we haven't dealt with any of that.
I asked out of curiosity to see, I'm sure it bumps up the sense of leadership within that child, you know, to take the lead on positivity rather than negativity around the school climate and culture. I would, I would expect those kind of outcomes from a program such as this. So with that, I yield, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Ms. Lowery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Marquis, very much. Great presentation, Amy, Andrew. Just, did I miss what grade this was for? It started in the fifth, is that correct?
Six, seven, and eight.
Six, seven, and eight, yep. Most of my questions were already asked, so I'm happy I got that information. Is there a continuation? So if they're in the sixth grade and we do continue with Coaching for Change, do they just progress on to another type of program? They wouldn't be repeating the same content, is my?
Right.
Okay.
No, they don't. So it varies, and so over the summer, when we're co-designing it with the teachers, we set up two different types of programs. And so, and then the, if they come back the following year, we're designing a different type of program, we're having a different spin. And we also allow the students to be peer leaders within the groups, so they're not doing exactly the same thing.
Okay. Have you been in any other schools before two thousand and eighteen, or you just?
No, we, so two thousand, we started this model in Taunton, at the Parker, at Parker Middle School and Freedman Middle School, and then we grew into Fall River.
What year?
The sixteen-seventeen school year.
Okay, so some of those students are probably in high school right now, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, now is there any, with your program, is there any like measure, measurements of success? Is there any contact with these students in high school, what they're thinking? And is that something you envision for the future for tracking purposes and success, measuring success?
So measurement and impact is always like the big conversation. So we have an alumni program where the high school students that come from Henry Lord can come back as a high school mentor. So it's a college and a high school student working together, leading small groups. But we don't have a program that allows a hundred percent of our middle school students to stay involved. We just don't have that capacity, no other funding to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Right before the pandemic, my colleague, Mr. Corey, myself, met with Dr. Malone and started some brainiac ideas of something very similar to this. So I'm glad we really don't have to move forward to come up with something from the, from the bottom. But praise to you. I'm going to support this a hundred. I'm going to support this a hundred percent. I love the program. I yield. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one quick question. I think, Markis, you said four staff members went into education, three were subbing, one went to a permanent teaching job or got appointed as a teacher?
Yes.
In Fall River?
Yes.
Was that one that became a teacher, did, was their back, was their background in education or were they from an alternative?
Alternative background. So she she graduated with undergraduate degree in science.
Okay, so how'd she get certified?
I think she's right now in the process of.
Yeah, currently going through the certification process with Desi.
Okay. Like, is she used, is she piggybacking on our UMass Dartmouth program as a high school for her masters?
She started it. She started it, and now she is pausing because she's recognized there might be other jobs within the educational pipeline that she might be interested in. So going the route of masters in ed, she's just hitting the pause button, because I think she actually might even end up going guidance counselor, adjustment counselor route, to be completely honest. So that's the reason why she's pausing the masters in ed program, but she did originally get involved in it, yes.
So of the ten people that were there, how many, did any have an education background or all alternative?
We had one ed major.
Is he planning on staying for a teaching job or she?
They graduated and they went back home to New Jersey.
I was just wondering what the pipeline was like.
Yeah.
Because I think that's key for our district.
So if we look at the pipeline, right, like undergraduate, and if you, I think it's fifteen thousand college students with about seven thousand graduating every year. Of that, I want to say there's only about fifteen hundred colleges of color. The rest are white. And I think eighty percent were female. But that's spread out across the entire state. So there's not that large of a pool, especially when the major teaching colleges around here or Bridgewater State, UMass Dartmouth is not that big. And neither is Stonehill. Right? So there's not, and even if we look across state lines to Roger Williams, the pool's just not that big. Right? And so being able to think differently about a design or a grow-your-own program, I think that that's where this becomes really unique.
And that, yeah, and that's what I, that's what I look at when bringing in programs like this, both the impact on the kids and the long-term impact on the district to have, like, what was it called? Teach for America. They bring teachers through every year, but they they move on.
Right.
They move on. And it's kind of a little unsettling, because it seems like they get their footing after the second year, and then they're gone.
Yeah.
In a blink to back to their homes or to another district that may pay more. But I do, I do like the program, and I'm going to support this motion. Kev?
Yeah, just listening to some of my colleagues, and I did see that you wanted, or your proposal here was for five, five schools, and you only had two for the fifty-five thousand. So if I'm doing my math, doubling the fifty-five is only going to get you to four, not potentially five. Am I off on that or?
I think you're right.
Right, so it's around thirty thousand.
It's about a hundred and thirty.
Yeah, you know, so I will take my colleagues' advice of the three-year program, but I want to make an amendment to the motion that it's a three-year contract, but in year one, I think we need to increase it to a hundred and fifty thousand to get to the five schools, because I think that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is that the desire is to get to five schools, not just, I just doubled it because I thought. But if we're going to do five, I think we need to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment for five schools of a three-year agreement, so he can start the plan and know what's going forward. So I'd like to make that in form of an amendment to the motion.
Oh, second.
Oh, sorry. Second.
All right, we have a motion to second now on the original motion. Do we have to eliminate the first one or just add it up?
No, I think we can just vote on the amendment.
Let's give it a nod.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Markis.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time today.
Appreciate it, Amy and Drew. Thank you. Right, oh, so we got to go back? Yeah, go back to the original motion. That's what I wasn't sure of. Thank you. So we got to vote on the original amendment, the original also.
Funny thing is, we don't do anything.
Vote to eliminate it?
No.
No, but the shape, they don't do it.
Go ahead, Deb. Give it a, right. We had a motion to second on the, on the original amendment. We got to vote on that also.
So you voted on the amendment, which was a three-year contract, the first year at a hundred and ten.
That passed. Now we got to go back to the original motion made by Mr. Agia.
His original motion was to double it.
Did you withdraw it?
No, once we make an amendment, it becomes the new one.
That's what I thought.
Go ahead.
You voted on the amendment to amend the motion. Now the amended motion has to be voted on to adapt.
So I need a motion to second on the amended motion being adopted.
It's all set.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve, eleven point three is a discussion and vote to approve the physical move of Evolve Academy.
Motion to approve.
As referred by Special Ed Alternative Education Subcommittee presented by Dr. Sharice Taylor, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second.
Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Dr. Taylor.
So I'm just going to lay the context, and then I'm going to turn it over to the team who's been working diligently on this effort. So on April eighth, we met with the Subcommittee on Special Education and Alternative Education. During this meeting, Principal Damaris and Correa and Jan Doyle, the Director for Evolve, met with the committee to discuss all three high school options and to discuss the bringing the move, physical, moving the physical location from RPA to Durfee. So I'm going to turn it over to the team. You see in your materials that you've got some one-pagers and some context. And take it away.
Good evening, everyone. It was a great discussion that we did have at the Subcommittee meeting, and I'll just highlight some of the things that I said in support of this move. When the concept was presented to me, I thought about it. And aside from my, from my commitment to a mastery-based program or competency-based program, I was very intrigued at having the opportunity to bring an alternative step to Durfee High School. We've developed a very strong working relationship between RPA and Durfee over the last four years, and there's a very good process in terms of making referrals over to RPA. A good number of students that we find ourselves referring to RPA aren't necessarily the right fit, let's say. It's just that we've exhausted everything that we have at Durfee High School to offer these students. Now, there are students that an RPA referral is absolutely appropriate for based on how they conduct themselves and the things going on around their lives and in their lives. But for some students, it's not really the appropriate referral. It's just all that we have available to to offer the students. So for these students, for this this kind of group of students that that are kids that want to do well, that tend to follow the rules, but typically a lot of social, emotional issues and anxiety issues that emerge prevent them from navigating the bigger school or having success within the context of a regular school day. So when I learned about Evolve and heard more from staff, and you'll hear more, I said this is something that I really hope that we can find the support for with the committee to get this over at Durfee High School. So I want you to know that as a principal of Durfee High School, I fully support this move, and I'm hopeful that we can have a good conversation here tonight.
Any other questions? I, how many kids we talking, Mr. Damaris?
I'll, Jen, answer that.
Currently, there are twenty Evolve Academy students.
And the grade level is?
Grades ten through twelve.
So ten through twelve.
And there's a growth up to about fifty-five to sixty in the space. So over the next few years, we could grow to fifty-five to sixty over that time period.
In three grades or?
Yes.
Ten, eleven, twelve?
Yes.
If I could, and just within the context of the new high school, we do have space for this program. There was a, the space was designed for a program that we no longer run, and so it wouldn't be interrupting anything that's planned for the new school.
Okay. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, Mr. Damaris, is this a school within a school? Will these kids be attending classes as per usual at Durfee High School, or will they stay just involved with their academy?
I think the answer to that question is both. I'll let Jen get to the details. But at the core of their day, within the context of the curriculum that they're they're engaging with, that's that's a competency-based, project-based curriculum, they'll spend a majority of their day within the program. But being at Durfee now, they'll have the opportunity to access the the fine arts, the access CTE, access AP classes. So there will be crossover as the program develops.
So Jen, that means that the core program, those kids will be involved with you in that section at Durfee for the core learning in that program, but for the electives, that all those electives will be available to them throughout the building.
That's correct.
That's just fantastic, because I know that the electives are going to color their education phenomenally and give them such heightened opportunity. I mean, that's just very exciting for a kid in an alternative program to be able to have that as part of their regimen. Thank you, I yield.
Any further questions?
Just a brief comment. We did have a good discussion, I think, at the Subcommittee. That's what the Subcommittee is for, to look at things. And when it makes sense, we move them forward. So I'd like to tell everybody we were a hundred percent on board with it. We did talk about the, the space was meant for the bridge program, what we're known as the bridge program, and everyone committed that we're not looking to bring that back in that same fashion. That was one of the things that I requested, that I didn't want to see just another bridge. We needed to do a different program in a better way and have faith that that's what we're going to do. The only other comment I'd like to make was on the RPA side, that we also are not removing a program and then going to have some other things that this committee doesn't have a say in, to how does RPA look moving forward as well. So I trust that those conversations were going to be maintained as we go forward. So I'd ask you to support it, and I'm excited about it. Thank you, I yield.
Do we, we have a motion and a second, Deb?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Eleven point four is a discussion and update implementation of the dual language for school year twenty-one, twenty-two, as presented by Fernando Vera Cruz, Coordinator for English Language Learners, and Tricia Witty, Principal of Avarus.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second, just a quick question.
I have a motion and a second, Mr.?
There's no action. It's just a report.
Okay, my only question was going to be, I thought we, because of COVID, we didn't do this, but we had already kind of approved this ahead of time.
Right, so it's tonight, we were just giving you a heads up.
Yeah, that's all. I just wanted a.
Brief update.
Yeah, brief.
Yeah, no vote, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. Ms. Vera Cruz stepped into the hallway. I'm sure she'll be in here, and just here she comes. I'm Tricia Witty, the Principal of Avarus, by the way.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Had to take a break right before we came on. Are you ready?
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for having us once again to give you an update of where we are, the status of our plans to open our first dual-language program in Fall River, our K-Spanish dual-language program. My name is Fernando Vera Cruz. I'm the Director of the MLL Department.
Hi again, Tricia Witty.
Oh, you're already introduced yourself. Very good, very good, very good. So we did forward a one-pager to you. And in case you need any other documentation in terms of the communication plan with all our stakeholders, the language allocation plan, where we are with the curriculum development, we certainly can do that upon your request. But tonight, we're just going to give you a quick update where we are and our next steps. Before we do that, I would like to take the opportunity to publicly thank the Multi-State Association for the Bilingual Education, MARBE, that has been supporting us through this program, through this work and guiding us, as well as the members of the Dual Language Committee, who has done yeoman's work to bring us to the point where we are tonight. We're certainly ready to open. Our vision statement has not changed. Our long-term goal has not changed. We still have the long-term goal of opening a dual language in K and growing it to twelve. That's where we begin to see the benefits after certain years. So in terms of the research, we're not going to go deeply into it, but we do know that dual language is supported by research as a highly effective additive bilingual education approach. And I like to say that because the programs that we have typically are subtractive model, where instead of adding a language, we are subtracting the language that our students bring, their native language, to, and then become proficient in in English. This, what we do, is grow simultaneous both languages. And we have come in front of this committee and talked about not only the research, but the benefits of bilingual education, bilingual literacy, and biculturalism. So with that said, on the one-pager at the bottom, in terms of progress and accomplishments, we have shared with this committee all the bullets on the bottom. And as far as the steps, what we've done since we came back in September, at the top, we have interviewed and recommended a kindergarten Spanish teacher who comes to us with four years, at least four years of experience, who has traveled and taught in Ecuador and now teaches in.
Boston Public Schools.
In Boston Public Schools. She's in an eighty-twenty model. In Fall River, we are planning for a fifty-fifty model. But so she, so it would be even an easier experience for her. So we are very happy with this candidate, and we immediately made the recommendation so she can be hired and then go through some professional development in the summer, as well as help us with the assessment. And so in hiring her, she would get paid doing this work. We have done a ton of community outreach the past, in April, April twenty-eighth, twenty-nine, we went to Fall River to the Head Start and did two presentations and information to the, to the parents. And out of that presentation, we had thirty.
Thirty-two, I want to say.
Say it again?
Thirty-two, I want to say.
So at that point, twenty, and then we continued to get, so we had thirty-three parents or families who are interested, who have shown interest in this program. So that was very effective, and we will probably come back to Head Start once again, because the two sessions were different parents, so maybe we'll catch some other parents. We did share with you a flyer that parents are using. There's a QR code there, and that's how they are also submitting their interest forms. Like you said, we're working with MARBE to develop all the marketing, the intake, the assessment, and the lawery process. And on the one-pager, we have a link towards to the lawery process, but we can certainly come in front of this committee again and present not only on the lawery process that will take place in August, but as well as the, as the curriculum, if that's something that you would like request that we come and present to you. We have tons of brochures we shared, and I see some of us are wearing our buttons. And we have a banner, and we have flyers throughout the district and the community. And so we want to thank Ken Pachico, who gave us the signage for some, and he's been working hard to get all of those to us. So flyers have been posted at the preschools, markers all over the district and the community church, local agencies, et cetera, et cetera. I am waiting on, how do you watch the immigrant, for me to go and with a Spanish speaker, just share the information with the public again. And we've completed our year-long scope and sequence of using the teaching for bilingual literacy curriculum framework, the Etiquette Glass, which is linked to this one-pager. Again, we can go into more details of that if you so wish to invite us back. And that's so far what we have done. And so now the next steps.
Well, I just wanted to add on the school side, we're so excited to offer this, be able to offer this opportunity to our students, and we've been working hard sort of marketing it to our Viveras families and getting them excited about this opportunity that their children will have, sort of targeting the siblings of the K students that are coming in and making sure that they're aware that they have this choice for their student, for their children. We've really been working on the nitty-gritty and the details of everything and getting effective structures in place in the curriculum and the staffing, as Fernanda already explained to you, that we've hired our Spanish-based person, which was a tremendous step in the program. And we've worked on deciding which subject matters are going to be planned for, and which language they're going to be delivered in. That's a big piece of the program that we've also established. And we're really just building our own capacity and learning more and more every day through our collaboration with MARBE, through our, just collaborating with each other on how we can develop this culturally rich and equitable program for our students.
Any questions? Mr. Corey?
I'm going to reiterate not only my support, but my excitement for the program as well. Thank you, Principal Whitty, for taking this on in your school and taking on that responsibility to step forward. The social engineering that's going on all over the country is affecting cities all over the country, and this is a step forward in that direction. This is equitable. It's diversity. It's all of that personified. It seems like there's a lot of energy with you guys, you know, in the development of this program. That's what I'm looking forward to. I'm looking forward to seeing the energy undertaken once this is underway. It's going to kick off in September, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the idea is hopefully September. And I know that Fernanda has been working her heart out on this program. Thank you, Fernanda, for all your growth and development and research in this matter. I'm sure it's going to be, you know, really, really good, not without its flaws, but real good. And I want you to know that we're behind you. I'm very supportive of it. I'm sporting your button already, you know? So let's go, let's rock and roll. And with that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hensler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a quick question. Is this going to be rolled out for the entire kindergarten class or just one? So how many kindergarten classes do you have, Principal?
We currently have four mainstream classrooms. We have one ELL foundational classroom, and then, of course, our special education self- separate classroom.
Right, so will this go?
Well, what is going, as it rolls up, it's going to replace one of our foundational ELL classrooms, as well as one of our mainstream classrooms, because we plan to have an English side teacher and a Spanish side teacher. So the students would switch teachers midday.
Right, so kind of like half the kindergarten students, roughly?
Roughly.
So it's not every kindergarten student that has the opportunity, though?
No, and not every kindergarten student might want the opportunity either, so it's really about interest.
It's a disadvantage. I think it's a great opportunity. I think every student should have the opportunity to take part in this program. I mean, I thought, I kind of thought that was the intent when we rolled it out, and I can understand why maybe we can't, and some hesitation behind it. But in the future, I think that, you know, if this works, we should really expand it to every student.
Absolutely. I think this is just the start of this, and I expect it will definitely grow throughout.
The original intent of the design was to start small, to get on the board, if you will. But this will grow into likely multiple pathways across the city in different schools over the next 20 years. This, when I, Fernanda was on the team that developed the first MLL pathway at Two Way Immersion in Brockton. And it became, I was the superintendent of Brockton, my most prescribed school of parents who wanted their kids in the program because they were leaving fifth grade fluent in Spanish. And then for some of those kids, then starting Chinese in sixth grade and having Chinese six through 12, and leaving essentially almost fluent in Chinese, fluent in Spanish, and English by 12th grade. So if we think about the parent need, the reason why we're starting small is because we want a proof point, and then we're going to grow. So I'm really excited. We would have got on the board this year, but the pandemic threw us off. So this coming year, we think Viveras is a perfect location. We also have some growth space there because we have the library space there that we may be able to use purpose differently as we continue to look at all of our library programs. So I'm excited about it, and it's a perfect location. But I do see it growing, as you said. So give us a year, and then we can talk about the continual expansion.
Yeah, because it's a huge advantage for the students enrolled in that program, like for the rest of their lives. Like, I'm kind of jealous that, you know, my kids are past that point now. Could be rolled this out next year, maybe like fourth grade or second grade at some other schools. So I hope to see it expand. Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Corey?
I forgot to ask a question before. It's based on the lottery. Principal Whitty, what is the lottery, is the lottery for the district that represents Vivera School?
No. The lottery will be held sort of, I mean, we're still working this process out, and we're still learning about this process. But the lottery is essentially going to be held sort of in buckets. So we have, Vivera students will be given preference because it is their neighborhood school. And then after the Vivera students are, you know, entered into the spots or whatever, and it's opened up to the district. But we have, it's going to be English side and Spanish side, so we have to make sure that the students that we're enrolling are fitting into the language profiles that we have within those bases. So it's not one big lottery, per se. It's sort of like these buckets of lottery.
Yes.
If you want it, yeah.
Thank you, Ayl.
Anything further? Okay, thanks for the update, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11.5 is a discussion and vote to refer the social media policy to the Policy Subcommittee as presented by Dr. Malone.
Motion to refer? Second.
I have a motion, second. You all set?
Well, Mr. Aguirre brought this to our attention. I agree that the policy needs to be reviewed and updated. It was written in 2012, a very different time regarding social media use. I've spoken with several other colleagues. They're all in the midst of working on such policies. So referring to the Subcommittee, I'll get documents for them, and they can start developing a new and updated policy that's clear, concise, and meets the needs of the district.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so I have a reason for issuing this request to put this on the agenda. So I had received a picture of a Twitter post that was liked by what it said, "Far River Superintendent." And when I first got the report, I said, no, that, there's no way that was the case. But in looking at it, it was liked by the Far River Superintendent page. So looking at some of the documents we had and the conversation we had earlier, I think that's the, you know, official school department page that I think started with some other name, but Far River Schools Info. So when I got the complaint, I looked at it and said, this shouldn't be liked by the superintendent on an official school department Twitter. Their post was a post related to the size of somebody's genitalia. And I thought that that shouldn't have been the case. So I looked into it a little more and went back and found that the one that said, "Far River Public Schools Info," when you look at that Twitter site, it actually says, "Put your effin' mask on," you know, spelled out. That got me to thinking, like, there's something going on here with our social media issues that we have to address because I think everyone would agree that we have a district, social media should only be about school-related issues, and it shouldn't like anything personal or anything. After trying to piece this all together, what I think is happening is Dr. Malone is looking at the Far River Superintendent page as his own personal page. And I don't think that that should be the case, and I don't think that that should go on moving forward. I think we need to have some better control of what is liked and not liked by the page called Far River Superintendent/Far River Public Schools Info, which is a page that was created to give information to parents about goings-on in the district and the like. So I don't think that either of those situations should be out there, but we also need to have some control over what it is. If an individual wants to have their own social media, it should say that individual's name, not be looked at like as if it's the school department. I really had no answer for somebody to say why a page would talk about what was in that post, and it says liked by the superintendent. I have no answer for it. So I think we just need to control it, and I think we just need to issue a directive that says the page is for Far River use only, and we need to control who actually has access to it. We can only, you know, look at what happened in the police department to know that we need to have some control over how many people have access to these official type of situations. So I just think that we need to issue a directive and then forward this to the Subcommittee. The policy is old, but it also refers to, like, teachers. It doesn't refer to district-wide social media. So I don't think there's any regulation on that right now. So I think what's most urgent for us is to issue a directive to the superintendent to create his own social media that has his own name on it and not utilize the district social media for liking individual things, sharing things, and using it as an individual page. There has to be a difference between the district pages and individual's pages. So I'm not sure the mechanism for that, but I think effective now, while we're waiting for the Subcommittee to address it, we have to address this issue of, we can't have the superintendent on an individual page liking things that are on the district-wide page. So I'll open it up to discussion. I don't know if there has to be a vote, but I can speak for myself that that's what I feel strongly. We shouldn't be getting those type of messages. I yield.
Mr. Har?
Yeah, well, I do, yeah, I think there was a motion made in seconds, so I do think we got to, you know, refer it to the Policy Subcommittee. But I, I mean, I agree. I'm not, I'm all for, all for this. That's fine. But I just, listening to Mr. Aguirre, it just piqued my interest. Who actually has access to that, Mr. Malone? Is it just you or?
No, this is myself, Paula Soars. I think it's myself and Paula Soars now.
There might be a couple others.
Yeah, but I just want to be, I don't know what Mr. Aguirre is referring to. So he's basically made a blind allegation. I've asked for a copy when this was brought to my attention, and that was not provided to me. So I don't know if you know how Twitter works, but there is an opportunity at times when you're scrolling through what comes through on your feed that you may have liked something erroneously. I don't know, but I don't have a copy of what you've referred to. So you've made an allegation now without providing me any evidence of it. So I'd ask you kindly, if you have an allegation, can I see it? Because I don't know, I don't even know how to address what you've brought forward. I asked you for a copy.
You know, I just, I got one complaint, too. I can, if I still have it, I can send it to you, too.
Well, I've asked Mr., he obviously brought something. He actually used some language here, so I don't have a copy. So I just, maybe if you could be so kind as to forward that to me. But that is the, you know, we try to use, anything that we send out on Twitter is, meets the education, you know, it's something, we always kind of use the, it's got to be education-related, something that have to do with schools, education, or, as I said, we've done a lot with helping with the vaccine and those kinds of things recently. But you can see the tweets, just from today alone. When I first brought here, we had 300 Twitter followers. We now have over 6,000. And, you know, Twitter is a device that we use to communicate, and I think communicate effectively. But I need to see what you're referring to, Kevin.
Yep.
And I yield.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Hensler, then you, Kevin, okay?
All right. I agree, you know, we should always update our policies to reflect current social media standards. Definitely something we should always look at the doing. If it hasn't been looked at since 2012, clearly we need to update it. You know, I want to see it, too, right? Like, and not only do I want to see it, but, you know, praise in public, discipline in private, it's kind of something that we should all try to do everywhere we do things, right? Because districts got enough, you know, we're in enough hot water. We don't need to be creating any ourselves, right? So if there is something and one of us sees it that we want to address, let's talk about it, right? But I mean, I guess there is some issue there with forum talking about things together, right? So maybe you can't share that with the whole committee? I mean, I don't know. Is there a law that says you couldn't, when you got that message, you couldn't have shared it with all of us so we could have seen it together and we could all looked at it like, wow, you know, something needs to be addressed, this needs to be changed? And I think there might even be an opportunity to undo something. If you like something, you can unlike it, and, because accidents do happen, too. So I mean, there's a lot of thoughts going on right now, but I don't, obviously, we don't want somebody liking inappropriate stuff from this district. So let's look at the policy and fix it, that's all. I yield. I'd like to see that as well.
Well, reading from the policy, one of the comment, number 11 in the policy reads the following. "If you are communicating as an employee of the district in your online communications, you must be aware that readers will assume you speak for the school district. Therefore, all of your online communications, when you're actually acting on behalf of the district or creating the appearance that you are, must be professional at all times and reflect positively on the district." So this is like in the current policy. So my point in this is that we bring things forward to the meetings so that we can discuss it here in public without violating any of the rules. I know that it was brought to the superintendent's attention about, "Wear your effin' mask," from last year by a different person. And this is still sitting there now, if you look at it. So the Far River Public Schools Info heading is where we started, and that's where we used to give out Far River Public Schools information. Somehow, that particular Twitter morphed into Far River Superintendent, Public School Superintendent. My point is, is that that shouldn't be used as Dr. Malone's personal Twitter. So what it is, is it says, "Far River Public School Superintendent Liked," and it talks about Amazon workers having to urinate in bottles. There's no laughing matter, but this Iraq story reminds me of, and it goes on to talk about the gentleman having to use the restroom, and it talks about the size of his genitalia. Totally inappropriate. Totally inappropriate. When I asked about this to the mayor, because it's a district, it's a school committee issue, so when I brought it to the chairman's attention?
How are you having conversations about me with the mayor behind my back that you're bringing allegations for? That's a point-of-order question I have. I'd ask Attorney Assad to get, answer that.
I think I'm very well within my rights to talk to the chairman about a school department-
You haven't brought something to my attention. You just accused me of something, Kevin.
I didn't accuse you.
Please read the rules.
It's not, I'm not accusing you of anything. It's a fact.
You did. You never should, you never presented it to me.
Hold on, quiet, quiet, one at a time, guys, one at a time, please. Oh. Kevin's got the floor.
Just a real quick point, Kevin, if you could, I'm on the Twitter feed. Can you tell me where that is? I just want, so I can read it and see it myself, like, what date?
I don't have the date, but I can get it to you.
All right, I appreciate that.
Somebody obviously gave it to you, and you never brought it to my attention.
No, I did not.
So that issue of trust is something I take serious.
Well, you should take it serious.
Yeah, and obviously you haven't showed me that.
Well, the fact of the matter is, the facts are the facts.
What are the facts, Kevin?
Whether it was appropriate or not, you shouldn't, you shouldn't-
How do you know that I did that, Kevin? What if it was hacked? I don't know where those things came from.
All right.
There's a million things we could talk about. The smartest thing for you to do is say, yeah, we're going to refer the policy and address it.
Mr. Chairman, grab the floor.
Mr. Aguirre?
So when I look at the, when I made the suggestion to the superintendent, that we need to put this on the agenda, I got an email from superintendent in relation to this.
The whole committee did. Please read it.
Yep, I do not have the actual tweet mentioned, but hopefully one of you can forward it to me. "I try to make sure likes and retweets are connected to the Fall River Schools and are education-related. Based on how Twitter works, when scrolling through, it's possible to like a tweet inadvertently without even knowing it. It is possible that I read the content and in fact liked the tweet because I like the content, but I need to see it to verify. As school committee, Aguirre is clearly not a combat veteran, nor has he ever served in the military. The context of the tweet may be hard for him to grasp, but once I see it, I can explain it to him and others in civilian terms. As I said, the tweet, if the tweet was inappropriate, it's likely that I would like it consciously because I do try to be very, very aware of what gets liked or retweeted. If my mother wouldn't approve, I stay away from it, a standard I try to live by 24/7." When I read this, this post was related to what's in this email. So I think it's disingenuous to say you don't know what I'm talking about.
Kevin, it was brought to my attention. Matt, let him talk.
And at the end of the day, here's just the bottom line that I'm trying to get from the committee, is to say, if Superintendent Malone or any superintendent in this district wants to have their own personal Twitter, they should have their own personal Twitter. They shouldn't use the public Twitter for personal likes and shares and information. That's all I'm simply saying. I'm not looking to get into an argument here. It's a fact of the matter that this was inappropriate to be liked, and it shouldn't be out there for us to see. The post about F your mask should be taken down immediately by somebody in the school department that has authority to issue it. The other piece of it is, we've also in the past made the determination that we weren't gonna be paying somebody else to use the Twitter page when we had that happen with the prior secretary. Now we have superintendent and other people. I think we need to have control over that, so we can be sure of what happens. That's all I'm simply saying. This will get referred, we'll go through a policy, but in my opinion, we should effectively immediately say we have a, a public page for public use only, not for individual likes by superintendent or any other person. With that, I yield.
Uh, Dr. Malone?
I just, I, when was that email I sent you?
Initial email, April twenty-second.
Okay, so you've waited since then to bring this to my attention?
Yep.
Well, that's great, Kevin, gotcha, great job, but I wanna say to you, when you say, how do you know, it was brought to my attention by other members of the committee that you shared this with, and still, I've asked for a copy, and I haven't been able to be provided with that. Because if you know me, and I think you know me, if I like something erroneously, that's on me, I own it. If it was something that perhaps the content, when you hit something, I, 'cause I don't know what it was, but it may be very specific, a part of, I don't know what, but since you haven't given it to me, I can't even rationalize it. So you've held on to this as a gotcha, and I just don't choose to operate that way, I, I deal face-to-face, as I would hope you would. So in the future, if you got something that, hey, I wanna, I didn't like the way this, you gotta bring it to my attention, Kevin, and I don't know who shared what with you, or how you got that, but I would appreciate if you brought it to my attention, that's the stand-up thing to do. That's how I deal, that's how most people deal. I would expect that you do the same, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes, I, um, in a normal situation, I probably would agree with you. The problem is, over the past several years, every time I wanna bring something up to you individually, you know what you're telling me? See you at the meeting, why don't you bring it up and let your colleagues vote on it and see it? Because you consistently tell me, when I try to have a, a conversation with you about an issue, bring it to the meeting, bring it to the meeting, one email after another. If I ask a question, I get chastised in emails. I'm tired of it, if you want me to bring it, I bring it to the meeting, and I let all my colleagues see it.
This is different, Kevin, 'cause this is a personal allegation you made against me, so live with it.
Yeah.
That's fine, we'll refer to the committee, and we'll have a policy discussion.
It's fine with me, and I'm glad you agree that you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be liking stuff that you shouldn't be, that's all.
I didn't, what I said to you was, I may have liked something erroneously, when you scanned through, I don't even know if you know how Twitter works, but you have a feed, and there's thousands of information pieces that go through it every hour.
Yep.
So sometimes you read something, you may hit like, you may hit retweet if it's something important, uh, involving education, but our Twitter feed has never strayed from our education-focused and related items. So it may have been an erroneous like, which is not a tweet, do you understand that?
But you shouldn't be liking it individually...
I don't think, again, what you're saying. Sometimes, when you go through your feed, you could hit something, if I hit something that was inappropriate, and I've done so in the past, I've gone back, as Mr. Hetsler has said, and said, oh, we can't like that, right? Or if somebody tweets out at you, and you see that they have swears in there, you don't even respond to it, or you block that content because it's, it's, you know, it's, you know, racist, or inappropriate, or whatever. So Twitter is itself is a device that's best used just for communicating information, which we've used it for and been successful. So hopefully the policy discussion will happen, I don't, I hope you're on that committee.
We asked you, do you have your own personal Twitter?
I don't have Twitter.
Right, so that's all I'm saying. Create your own personal Twitter, so you can like what you like.
I have the district's Twitter, it says Fall River Public School Superintendent.
Right, exactly, nobody else has a problem with that?
And we tweet out information. We, I, I don't use it as a personal Twitter.
Well, I beg to differ, when you look at it...
I'm sorry, I use it as the district information.
When I look at that, I don't agree, I think you're using it both as a...
Kevin, Kevin, this is your opinion.
As a school department and as a personal Twitter, just create your own Twitter page and like whatever the hell you want.
I'm not looking to create a Twitter page, Kevin, we communicate educational issues the best of our ability, timely information for parents, students, and community members.
And you're representing the school district when you do.
Okay.
And that's my problem.
It seems like you have lots of problems with me, Kevin, and we can agree to disagree.
Why does nobody else have a problem with this?
I do have to say one thing, though, to make, make clear, Kevin called me about this, Dr. Malone, to put it on the agenda, and that's why we had a discussion.
Why don't you bring it forward to me, ask him for a copy?
I did tell you, I can show you, I said I don't have it.
Yep, so Kevin's had something that he's been holding, and, and hasn't given it to me, and then comes here and makes allegations that aren't fair, because I've never gotten a chance to address it, which to me just seems like, again, at the, at the city council meeting, we said to school committee vice chair Costa, well, I guess you, don't, you trust the superintendent a lot more than I do? This is very personal, we gotta get beyond that, Kevin. You gotta, we gotta grow up, my commitment to you is to not be personal, to grow, go forward in best interest of the district, and I expect the same from you.
Well, let me just tell you, it's not a matter of trust, I'm disappointed in you in the way you've behaved over the past, and the damage that you're doing to this district is very concerning to me, so that's why...
Lot of damage here tonight, all the progress we made, huh?
Yep, well, I'm telling you right now, it has nothing to do with trust, it has to do with the way that you behave and the way you're treating people that work for this district.
Kevin, the way you behave and treating people.
That's the problem.
Hey!
That's the problem, has nothing about trust, let's just be clear.
Okay, all right, thank you, Kevin.
Get your own Twitter page and stop putting inappropriate things out that make it look like the school department's liking, that's the message here.
All right, that's enough, we're gonna beat a dead horse here, I believe, should refer it to the subcommittee, we got a motion and a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, eleven point six, a discussion and vote to approve the second read of the administrative salary matrix.
Motion to approve second reading of the administrative salary matrix?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I brought up, uh, this issue before, and I personally like to see these, when you look at the ranges, I took these ranges as a hard ceiling, and after the last meeting, I asked the superintendent about this, and he said, well, no, that wouldn't be the high ceiling, we could give the extra, um, incentives for degrees and other things in addition to that. So I'd just like some clarity on whether it's the, whether it's a hard ceiling, I think we're raising the, the fees up, uh, the salaries up, and I think we should know what the max salary is, so that we don't end up going over what's here. Once the school committee allows this, uh, matrix to move forward, we lose any authority to control the, the maximum amount of these salaries each year, so I, I really think we need to get some clarity on that. I am in favor of raising these salaries, but I think it needs to be a hard ceiling.
Any, any other discussion? Dr. Malone?
Yeah, I'll bring forward Tom Coogan to help, uh, go over the matrix that was, uh, we've worked on for over a year, uh, brought forward to the committee. We're very, uh, motivated to, uh, to increase those ranges, uh, for a host of reasons, and I'll let Tom speak specifically about the, uh, hard caps.
So, um, with respect to the, um, the, uh, comment or the, the advisory that Committee Managir brings up, um, I, I would, I would say that there is, um, you know, the, part of the reason for redefining the ranges is, is the overall compensation package, however, we do wanna recognize certain characteristics, so, um, I, I guess what I'm saying is that uh, either we could look at the ranges and adjust them accordingly, if, if you wish to have a hard cap, or we could back into, um, the caps that, that we've suggested, with the understanding that it doesn't really address all of the issues that we used as the rationale for bringing this forward, and, and again, you'd be backing down from that hard cap based on, on recognizing those factors that we feel are valuable, and, you know, certainly incentives for attracting the right kind of people, so, um, I'll take commission, uh, questions from the committee with respect to those, but, uh, I guess I'm just looking for some guidance here. We feel as though those items indicate an investment on the part of the individual to further their career, and, and they, they take a certain amount of work, and we feel they're worthy of a certain amount of recognition, so, um, I'll answer any questions the committee has with respect to those items.
Anybody have any questions on the, on the cap? I, I'm a little confused, so I kind of, it, so if, let's, for example, the elementary A, the high, is that what that person is, is the max for that person? I just, that, that's what I would think the cap was, that, that's what they could make.
No, with proposed ranges are what's in yellow, on the right.
Proposed ranges are what's in yellow?
On the right.
All right, so that number in yellow is the cap?
Correct.
They can't go over that number?
Yes.
All right, so those are the three ranges, and on the next page...
That's not, I'm just trying to get clarity, that's, my point was...
Yeah.
So if elementary's one oh eight to one thirty, my question was, if there's other things that are gonna raise that salary up, I was thinking that raising it up one oh eight to one thirty, the one thirty is a hard ceiling, that if somebody had a, a doctorate or PhD says four thousand, which I think is probably meant for EDD as well, but that would be within that one thirty, so that the person couldn't just say, okay, I'm gonna maximize it at one thirty and then add four thousand. That's what I asked at the last meeting, and was told, no, it goes over, so, um, I wanna support this, but if that's the hard cap, I hundred percent support it, I think it's, it's fine, it just, it gets us to control a little bit of where the, and if you get pushed up, when somebody's here for ten years and they're up against it, that, they just come back individually and say...
Raise the cap.
I think you might have, and I apologize, but it might have been misleading at the, at the last meeting, the intent was, is that within the whole cap, you wouldn't look at the whole package, and stay within the cap, but you would be awarding for different things.
Correct, it's, the, the intent is to recognize, um, say, for example, you're hiring somebody, and they're early in their career, and they haven't attained those items yet, then within that range, that's established with the cap, you would, you would be lower in that range, right? And then if the person finishes up a degree, whether it be a CAGS or a doctorate or some advanced, or they have some other, um, item that, that entitles them to additional compensation, that brings them up higher in the range, so you don't have all of your people at the same range. At the same time, you have people within the district that have different levels of service, they've been more experienced or less experienced, so you're gonna still operate within that range, however, there is a, you know, a cap on the, on the high end, it's just how, how we, how we address that cap, whether the committee wishes to go beyond that base salary, which is what, what that, that says, base, uh, or whether they wanna make that the entire range, and then we just work within that range and work down from, from the high end.
So what are you trying to say this is? Is this the entire range?
I, I believe it says, yeah, I believe it says base salary there, and there's the potential to go beyond that based only on those stipend items that we recognize.
Right, which is different than what we just said to the mayor.
Yeah, Tom...
I'm just trying to get on the same page.
Kevin's right.
All right.
We've communicated two different things. So, what I'd like the committee to do is to vote to approve what's in yellow, which establishes the range, and that we would work within that to be able to, um, to balance.
Yeah, within...
Within the range, now, your point about not coming back for three years, we've established a base, if you wanna add five grand to each one of those bases on the high end, to ensure that we're within there and competitive, I'm okay with that as well, but taking any action tonight helps us dramatically, uh, with our ability to recruit and retain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Just, uh, are we doing all pages, or is this the front page?
So, uh, so it's the front page on the right, in yellow, and then, um, the rest of the information is the, uh, is, is where everyone is.
Yeah, I, I meant the subsequent about the, um, the ones that are individual contracts, those are still gonna be individually? On page, uh, the last page, talks about assistant superintendents and directors and stuff.
Yes, we're proposing, we're proposing those ranges increased as well.
As part of this particular...
Yes, so we'll vote tonight, we're looking at the principals and the central office ranges.
And then those even within that still have to come back individually?
So...
You know how normally we've been, we've been, um, negotiating those individually?
Well, the, the, the ones that the committee negotiates, yes.
So even though they're on here, we would still, this is kind of a guide, is that what you're trying to...
Yeah, we would, so we could have clear conversations when we're hiring someone about, here's what the range is, and then it's up to you to negotiate, like, for example, we, you know, we brought, uh, Dr. Taylor in, said here's the range, and then she worked with, uh, with Bruce's, at your discretion, at your direction, to negotiate, and then you guys approved.
Yeah, so I'm saying, this won't change that particular piece, but it's...
No, but it, but it would, um, you know, when I come back to you guys and say, uh, you know, I'm looking for a, a one and a half to two percent increase for central office employees, and you guys say, we'll let you approve, but make sure you're, you're within your ranges, and, and, and we do it that way.
Yep, uh, my last question is on extended learning.
So, great, so this was, we started working, now, remember, we started working on this before, uh, the elimination, so we're up in, we're up in the air as to, the state's telling us that that, those grants are really going away, so they're not gonna be here, so we lost those, those, uh, the big ones, the ninety-minute, uh, grant ones. We still have, I think, three schools with the other state funding, uh...
We have two.
Two.
Morton and Laternal.
Morton and Laternal, and they get a percentage, so that percentage, as we have here, as you see, uh, like we do with the teachers, if it's a twenty-minute, uh, the principal gets additional money, if it's a thirty-minute, it would be that additional. ELT was, was always outside of the contract.
Yep, so, um, my thought on that was the, um, prin, there's principals that work in a school non-ELT...
Yep.
That work just as many hours as the person that has ELT in it, so I think if we're raising the, if we're gonna pay a principal what a principal deserves to be paid, I think we should get rid of these extended learning time stipends and pay them within the range, you know?
Right, and this is my point, uh, back to you, Mr. Aguirre, I was saying, i- if you, if you tacked on five grand to the end of each one of those, I could live within and be totally fine for three years, and, and then got rid of the ELT, and just know that for, for degrees though, we would be including that in the salary negotiation, but within the, within the cap, not as extra.
Right, yeah, I, I think it should be act, within, so we're not like, looking at extra. I'm not sure about the five grand piece, I think you're good for the current year. I don't think you're gonna go up against these yet.
Well, I, I'm hoping I don't come back to you for three years.
Right, but I think I'd be comfortable more with just approving this, and if you're getting up to it, then you come back to the committee to see if we wanna raise it. I'm not sure the appetite's there to add five grand more, this has taken a big jump, I think, which I think is needed, um, but I, I, I think that I can support this as a hard ceiling, and, um, we can come back for the extended learning time, the, the five grand piece you talked about, at a future meeting, so I will support this, thank you.
All right, so we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Go, go ahead, Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Upstayed.
Mayor Coogan?
Uh, yes. Next item up is eleven...
Thank you.
Next item up is eleven point seven, is discussion and vote to approve job descriptions for the part-time, full-time utility service worker and Massachusetts licensed journeyman electrician, low voltage technician, as presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to vote to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, at the last meeting, we asked, we had talked about these positions coming into play and we needed to provide you with some job descriptions for the nutrition side of this. We, we were getting calls both from our own people in, in the, in the custodial ranks and in nutrition, but also a few committee people reached out because the concern was is that people weren't, were thinking they were going to be washing pots and pans as part of this job. It's a custodial janitorial position and it's not washing pots and pans. It's actually doing the work that the person who currently is doing that work in the cafeteria is, is doing. And the only addition of piece to that is the fact that they would probably be unloading vehicles when delivery vehicles came for nutrition. And that's probably the only thing that they're not doing now, or you know what, maybe some of, some of them are. So the job description basically explains that, lays that out so that it becomes clear and when someone applies for that job, they'll know exactly what they're applying for. And that's the two nutrition pieces. One, the full-time person and the other part-time utility service worker.
Any questions on that part of it? Kevin?
So this is equivalent of the custodian that we, as part of negotiations?
Yes.
Like this is the job? We didn't have that before, but we talked about it?
Right. So this was the job that was agreed to in the two.
So instead of having the person located there for me?
Exactly.
This is the new person? This is the new name?
Yes.
You know, to that, the, and they have to work a hundred percent for the nutrition department, I believe. So.
Yes.
The only concern, I, I'm going to support this because I, we already kind of agreed to this anyway, but is, is the, as we add more positions, you know, what, how busy are all the people in all of these positions that we work? So as just a general statement, in general, custodial maintenance and the like, we are adding a lot of positions and I support almost every one of them, as you know, from coming here. I would just, you know, caution to be sure that the supervision of those folks is, is to the point where we're not going to have people not working a full, a full day or they're hanging around or anything like that. So I, I think you understand my point on it.
I do.
I'm not saying as we start adding more, people come to us and say like, how many more positions we're going to add? And when I give my support to say, yeah, I think we need it, I'm really backing up the administration to say, yes, we need it. But then I also can't have people saying they're not doing things accordingly. So I will support it. Thank you for your clarification. I yield.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any, any further questions for Mr. Pacheco on the first half of that? You want to hit the second, Ken?
Sure. So the, the two, the, the two other positions, which is the electricians low voltage, so those will be working with our IT department, doing some of their work also, taking care of some camera work, any other low voltage situations, door openers, items like that. They are licensed electricians that will be hired and that they will have this, this other specialty, you know, in their, in their toolbox, so to speak. And that these positions are in the twenty-two budget.
Anything on that? Uh, Mr. Corey?
Ken, the only curiosity I have is these, the electrician, is that just for the nutritional department or is that for the whole school?
No, this is district-wide. These have nothing to do with nutrition.
Oh, okay.
So these are working out of the maintenance.
That's district-wide.
They're working out of the maintenance department.
Yeah.
And, and being shared across the district.
And that, that includes the standalone auditorium building as well?
Yes.
Thank you. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further on this? Mr. Agia?
Just a quick question on the, when you look at the duties, who is currently doing that work in, in the current time?
I, I'm not sure. I was just going to point out that I'm not sure if Mr. Pacheco mentioned it earlier, but some of this work has been self-contracted in the past, either to telecom contractors or people like that. This gives us the capacity to have our own people doing it, which is a savings on outside contracting, but also builds our capacity to be able to service, as he mentioned earlier, cameras, phones. We're switching all the phones to voice over IP systems. So a number of things that used to be sort of handled by either the phone company or another company, a Lime company, is going to be able to be serviced by our own, our own employees. I just wanted to clarify that.
So do we have anybody doing all of these things now?
No. We do have, we do have some tech people who are working. Unfortunately, Scott, I can't be cloned. Scott Cabral does a majority of the wires and pliers work, along with a few of his people, but it's, it's, it's taking them away from some other work. And this will give them that person or two who would be doing some of this work ahead of them and allowing them to do the work that I think we really want them to do.
So they're stretched too thin?
I think they are, yes.
Then, you know, when I look at it, just it's hard for us to figure it out. You know, we're adding positions, we, promoting people, we're doing this. It, it is hard to sometimes figure, are we just creating a job for, that somebody else was doing when they got promoted? That's the nature of my conversation about it. And did I see the salary in here or is this like part of?
It's a contract. It would be part of the electrical, it's part of the maintenance contract and it's an item already in that contract.
So it's within the union?
Yes.
It's not a, it's not?
No, this is a union.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa, Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point eight is a discussion and vote to approve a one-year contract extension for Witsen's New England, as presented by Ken Pacheco.
Vote to approve one-year contract extension for Witsen's.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the Witsen's contract? Ken?
Uh, this is our renewal. This is addendum number two. It's the last part of their three-year contract. The item, as, as it's stated, there's a small increase reflective of consumer price index, food away from home in northeast urban over prior fiscal year. It's an anomalous amount of money with the amount of, of work that's being done, a seven thousand, a little over a seven thousand dollar increase in the administrative and a four thousand dollar increase in the management fee.
Any questions on the Witsen's? Mr. Agia, please.
When it says reflect a three point seven percent increase in the administrative and management fees, is that set by?
It is by, by those indexes.
By the index?
And it's set in the contract originally. So when we.
But it's a management one? Is that, is that the same as for individual raises? Is that, is that a different percentage?
No, it's a different, it's all, everything is built into this number, both of these numbers.
No, I mean, outside of this. Is that when there were the three point seven percent increase in administrative and management fees, if you have in your contract that you're going to get raised based on a percentage, is that the same percentage across the state? You know, northeast index, whatever they call it?
These indexes, but this is basically for Witsen's only. This has nothing to do with any of our personnel.
Yep. I'm just saying in general, is that the same number? Is the, is the going rate three point seven the increase each year?
Yes. And these, these are the indexes, yes.
Basically for salaries, for management?
Last year was three point two.
Yep. But this is around the same, so.
Yes, absolutely.
The, the only question I had on it was, is, and I think you might have mentioned this before, that when we do the one and one, we don't, there's no option for us to just say we want to do another five.
No, so we will go out.
We have to go out for bid.
We will go out, we will start working on this probably the end of this year to be ready to go out to bid in, in early.
Because it sounds like you're really happy with the services.
Witsen has, has been a very, very good company to deal with. The, the, the people who work for Witsen's that are onsite are phenomenal and the back office people and management have been very, very cooperative, helpful in, in every single way that we can imagine in getting us through the COVID piece with the, with their ability to, to help us package items for Grab to go. We, I mean, we're well over a million two in, in what we've put out for, for meals since the seventeenth of March, and that's attributed to our people working very, very hard. But the management from Witsen's has been phenomenal.
Yeah. I mean, I only say that because I'll tell you from one member's perspective, if you want to do it as soon as you can to lock this in, I would support it because within the confines of the bidding and all that, if we like the people, why, why wait till later on? The sooner you do it, if, you know, they win the bid or whatever, however that works, I'm willing to support it. So with that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Mr. Corey?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to praise you, Mr. Pacheco and the superintendent because during the pandemic, when schools shut down over a year ago, you guys made it a priority that Witsen's would still be in partnership with the school district to distribute lunches to the kids who were, when schools shut down. And I think our program doing that was commendable, highly commendable. So I just have a question out of curiosity, Ken. I'm pleased with the contract and I'm going to support it fully. Is there any latitude within the contract that with unused portions of food that are unopened to maybe partner with our shelters in and around the city? Is there any latitude to do that sort of thing?
I'm not quite sure that the, the meal reimbursement process, so we, Witsen's keeps a pretty tight seal on the product dates. So we're using product and we're ordering product as needed. So we don't have a lot of leftover product every day and we do prepare meals ahead of time because of the amount of food that we're serving. So breakfast, for instance, is a packaged breakfast and with the exception of few.
I, I know exactly what you mean because I've, I've seen it. I've, I've, I've worked with it.
Right.
In my days, you know?
I think the.
That being said, I've, I've seen, I've seen some unpackaged food just get returned. And I was just wondering if there was any latitude to deal with shelters in our district.
I, I don't know that we're dealing with any of that per se. What I can tell you is that we, through the, the USDA, with the products that we have, we have two hundred and, two hundred and fifty boxes that are going out every week to shelters. I mean, we're providing to quite a few shelters as, as we are the, the distribution for different organizations. So there's a lot of food that's leaving the district that we're providing basically just logistical support to these other groups.
It's really good.
I can find out if there's a possibility of us doing anything with that. I, I think there is a couple of issues.
If you could, I would appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Coogan?
Well, well, Ken's certainly probably more up to speed than I am. I can tell you that in years past, some of the things that we actually relied on Witsen's assistance with was getting through the annual audits that, that the DESC comes down and checks the way you're handling food, what are you doing with leftovers, what do your production records look like. So because that's a federal grant designed to feed kids, they keep a very close eye on any diversions that, that, that happen as a result of any of the food supply stuff. So one of the things that we count on them is let's not get in any trouble for doing something we're not supposed to and keep our record keeping clean. So it's one of the things. They've expanded the program to allow for some of the other things that Mr. Pacheco's been so innovative about in terms of food to community, food, and some of the other things. But I can tell you that with the monies that come through the, the school lunch program, it really is designed to feed kids and has to be accounted for very carefully.
Surely. I, I totally understand that. There's liability issues if we cross lines and we don't want to cross those lines at all. That was the nature of my question. I was wondering if we could maybe examine those codes. I don't know if we could examine those codes, just to open up, because I've seen so much unpackaged food, even on a daily basis in the schools in my days, you know, that I'm just wondering if we could help out a little bit. That's all. So, Ken, if you could find that out?
Absolutely.
I would really appreciate that very much. With that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Anything further on the Witsen's contract? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa, Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee? Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point nine is a discussion and vote to approve the facility school use as referred by facilities and operations subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Any, any discussion on the facilities or you want to fill us in a little bit, Kenny? Anything?
Sure. So the matrix that's been provided is broken down into community, nonprofit and community profit. And we've got a few options. We have the current fifteen percent increase and a twenty-five percent increase. Within this, this piece, obviously, we address the Durfee field. And, and as we talked about with the, to, to, to an extent that we feel it's an obligation to make sure that we somehow create this fund to replace carpets, to replace our artificial surfaces when they, when they come in. But when I say carpet, we've also replaced carpet in the auditorium here. And that's due to the use of, you know, the school use fund that we, we do have. So the value to the rental is twofold, number one, if, if we're able to replace carpet in the auditorium in a building that, you know, this building is a two thousand and nine building, so twelve years old, and we needed to replace carpet. It's getting used. We want to make sure that the, the building is always very presentable for our uses, but also if, if a group wants to come in. And we're, our auditoriums are very sought after, both because of the, the appearance, but also the equipment that we have in those, the sound systems, lighting and everything else for dance companies and, and other shows. With the outside areas, the fields are, take a lot of, you know, a lot of punishment, but they also provide us with the ability to have very good Division One or middle school fields that some schools and some districts don't have. And the only way to, to continue that is to be sure that we are getting an appropriate amount of money to cover our costs, number one, which is our security, our custodial, our grounds, but also to provide the district with some money to do renovations when the time comes. And both the, the fifteen and the twenty-five do provide us with the advantage. I'm suggesting that we go to the twenty-five because if you look at the rentals, the community rentals are a little less than the non, than the non, the nonprofit, I'm sorry, more than the profit. But what it does for us is it does give us that leeway to make some necessary repairs and renovations on the facilities. We're also looking at the, the fields that are not artificial surface, that we don't need to collect a fee on per se, but we do want the cooperation of that renter to provide us with porta-johns so that we don't need custodial services. Nobody's entering our buildings. And then we'll, we'll have some trash and recycling receptacles there to keep the fields clean. And most of the time, we've had that cooperation with, with leagues in using those dirt fields. And we don't see a lot of necessary, necessary upkeep and we don't see a lot of overuse on those fields. However, there may come a time when we will have to spend a little bit of money on those fields.
Okay. Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Kenny?
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions. I've been getting a couple of phone calls here and there for the past couple of months on this topic.
Yes.
And we've had a conversation. So I'm going to put it out there. First, my question to you is how many youth organizations use the stadium football field?
As far as I know, there are not many. And I, and it may or may not have been included. And if I didn't include it, I apologize. We do have the Falcons. We have non-youth users that are using that. And that may be.
Not many, right.
There are not many currently using.
Right. I did read the minutes. I was interested in the subcommittee meeting. Mr. Costa basically stated that there, there could be some hardship on, on some of these, this fee being raised with some of the leagues that use this field. One of them is the Falcons, okay? Why I, I am concerned is this is ninety percent of our, ninety percent of these kids are former public school system kids, okay? They, they pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars to use the field. First child, second child, fifty dollars, second sibling, okay? I'm not going to get into all the, the figures and, and all that stuff, but I am going to tell you, they take in probably twenty-three thousand dollars on just registration fees and, and stuff like that. Without this increase of fifteen or twenty-five percent, it's at twenty-seven thousand dollars, okay? So with an increase of fifteen thou, fifteen percent or twenty-five percent, even if it's fifteen, it'd bring them to thirty-three thousand dollars. Now, my question is, what is the decision on the concession stand? Because that's how they would have to make up the difference, or this league is going to garbage, it's going b-bye. If we raise, if we go up fifteen percent or twenty-five percent for our youth football league in the city, that basically these kids, it's this, I mean, it's the feeder league of the Durfee football team, okay? We got some kids that play for Durfee now that are lifelongers for the Falcons team. We got Javon. We have Stella, running back. You know, we all know who that is. But is this set in stone that we have to raise a percentage to a, 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 something like the Falcons football program? Can we keep it the way it is? Can we discuss? I mean, these kids are our kids. They're our inner-city youth. And just the figures that they gave me, they're, they're in panic mode, you know? And I would hate to see this, this program fall apart. And maybe we can be a little creative on, on how we move forward with this and, and kind of leave them alone or?
So I, I don't, I know where you're going and I, and I don't believe that anything here is God in stone. So the, the request was to, to show what we have. These rates of.
Right.
Are at least ten years old, if not older. And when I tell you that we're sought after, the, the list goes on and on and on and that.
I'm sure.
And that, and the use of our facilities are in demand. And obviously because of they're, they're a good facility. Henry Lord is, is three football fields at Henry Lord. Are they, they're not turf, but they are three football fields there. The soccer fields at Sil- The soccer fields at Sylvia, other soccer fields at Sylvia, again, not turf.
Right, right.
One has lights.
But their fee isn't as high as the stadium.
No, no, any.
You know, their overhead, the Falcons overhead is much higher than the soccer league and any other league that goes on at Henry Lord.
Yes, and and the stadiums are the reason that the
Correct.
The the fact that the facility with the lighting, with the press box, there's a lot of amenities at Durfee that that cause the numbers. This this committee doesn't have to do anything. You can reduce them.
Right, and I know we have an obligation, 100%. I'm just, you know, I look at some of these numbers. They have to pay $48 an hour for the trainer, you know, they have to have a trainer on site. You know, they have to pay $38 for security, you know, an hour. They're at the school for 13 hours on a Sunday, you know, and it's it's turning into an amazing program. I mean, coming out of COVID, you know, these kids, they they they're going to have a sense of belonging again. They're going to have discipline again, structure, caring adults, you know, this is the stuff that we want the youth in our city to have. And if if this program falls apart, you know, I think it's just going to be a disjustice to injustice to our kids. You know, and I I just hope there's something that maybe we can be creative, we can come up with something to help this league's like stay, you know. The concession stand, are they going to be able to use the concession stand? Because they were told that that's how they pay.
Sure. So I here's my issue with the concession stand. When I was on the city side, we built that concession stand for for the school department and it wasn't equipped. So when we turned that building over to the school department, we had, it was set up to be a concession stand. It may have had the plumbing, but I don't believe that any of the equipment in that concession stand belongs to. I know it wasn't bought for for the school department, so I'm not sure if that's an alumni issue, if the if the the PTO at Durfee or if it's the alumni owns that equipment. So I I think the conversation is probably bigger than I can have right now because I don't know all the players.
Do we know?
And I can probably find out who what, how all of that mechanism works and that would be the easiest way to to figure that particular piece. And I understand because we're not, we do have other groups who are, you know, an adult group that's looking to use the fields and they would love to use the concession stand because again, they're not paying the price that the Falcons are paying. They're paying much higher and they're looking for a way to offset that.
Right, and I have no problem charging adults double.
No, 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 I understand. And I'm just saying that I think the concession stand is a pivotal piece here.
Right, it's a huge piece of, I guess, my conversation with you right now.
Right. So I can get that information.
I would I would appreciate that. I mean, nothing, like you said, nothing's in stone.
Nothing. This is, this was strictly referred for conversation.
I mean, Dr. Malone at the beginning of this meeting says, you know, kids come here for the sports. You know, we we finally get a a youth organization where it needs to be in football. We're a D1 school. If this program collapses, I I just think it's going to affect, you know, the the high school level.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Hudson?
Thanks. All right. So, I mean, this came before the subcommittee. We looked at it. I was about to amend my motion because I I wasn't sure. I didn't articulate the 25%. I was going to be in favor of 25% increase, which now that I hear committee, many person, women, Larevee's appeal. You know, obviously, I'm concerned. I don't want to see a league, you know, go belly up because they can't afford the fees. At the same time, we owe it to, you know, the students that go to Fall River Public Schools to have a good carpet on that field, right? And that costs money and we have to look at the cost of taking care of the turf. You know, every 10 years, I believe they last. So how do we allow people to use it and still have it at top shape for our students, right? And the way to do that is we have, you know, a mechanism in place to, you know, charge fees and and get that money that we're going to need to replace it in the future. So I understand they're concerned. I wish they came down, maybe spoke and said his input. I'm happy they had you. But I still think we need to raise the fees personally, personally, only because it's, you know, collectively, we all helped pay for it because at some point, this committee is going to come down to us deciding to pay for this new turf. And we're going to say, well, how come we got to replace it? Oh, we've been using it a lot. Other leagues have been using it and it's just, somebody's going to pay for it at some at some point.
Agreed.
So maybe, I'm not going to say that I won't decide to go 25%, you know, maybe it's 15% increase. I don't know what the, obviously, it's up to the committee to make that decision, but I do think they need to, you know, be increased, you know. Obviously, it hasn't been changed in 10 years and there are other options and obviously the league, I'm not going to sit here and say the league should do. But, you know, they can increase their fees a little bit too, maybe, I don't know. The concession stand, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's our building, right?
It is our building.
I mean, we could, we could outfit it, that building with stuff that belongs to us and at least make it easier. We could actually rent it out or allow people who are renting the field to use it.
Yes.
But like you said, there's other people involved. We need to find out who.
I just need to know who who owns the equipment in the in the unit. When the in the old field house, fryolator, we used an outside oven, cooking hamburgers outside of that building under a tent. All of that stuff happened. And then when we built that new concession stand, we knew that there was going to be an appetite to have equipment in there. And I'm not quite sure how far it's all, it all went. I'm not quite sure if there's fryolators in there, if we have a hood, an ancil system. I I don't know how well-equipped it is. I know that it has been off limits from what I've been told for anybody but Durfee.
Right, well.
And there's a reason for that and I'm going to guess it's because the equipment is not owned by Durfee. It may be owned by an alumni, the alumni group or some group.
Boosters.
In our building. Boosters, exactly, boosters or whoever. So if if the if it's the will of the committee to do something different than that and to equip it and then be part of a rental, that's a whole nother.
What we'd have to charge accordingly.
Exactly.
There's other things we'd have to look at, have to clean it.
Food handlers licenses, it's the whole nine yards.
Do we use that currently? Like do our, so we're having a football game there. Is that concession stand open?
Before COVID, yes.
All right. So it is open for for our events, for the public school events? All right, well, I mean, made a motion. It doesn't have a number attached yet, whether it's 15% or 25%. That'll have to be determined. I yield.
I'm going to go to Mr. Corey and then I'm going to go back to Mimi then, Kevin.
I just want to reiterate my colleague's passion on this issue. Mimi Larevee is a leader with the youth in this community. She listens to them, knows their intent. The intent is genuine. I also respect what the Facilities Subcommittee has to deal with as far as upkeep, cost and maintenance of our fields. So if there's a way to to generate income with the use of our facilities in the future for their upkeep, then I'm really hoping there's going to be a way that we can take care of the Falcons Football League too, if if they have a request. But I hear my colleague passionately questioning and so I think that we can find a way to see if we can satisfy that request. It may be a good idea for maybe them to come for a citizen's input, maybe present their case, give us a clear indication as to what their needs are so that we can try to support their requests, which I would be fully in support of. With that, I yield.
Okay, Mr. Kevin, Mr. Agia?
So what did what did the leagues pay for in the years past, the last few years for non-turf related usage?
I think it was $35 per day.
No matter what, like?
If if I think, and I'm not quite sure, I and I, you know, I should have brought that with me, but I want to say it was, maybe the Falcons were paying $45 for the setup at Henry Lord per day. It wasn't by the hour. It was by the day on the on the grass fields.
And what it, when you're looking at these rates, these are by the hour?
These are by the hour.
I I think there's multiple issues. The one about the Durfee with the kitchen stuff, we should know that as a committee. We should also know if there's agreements. I've found over the years that there's all kinds of agreements. Nobody can produce anything in writing, but there's all kinds of agreements. So they said they could do this. They said they could do the advertising. They, we need to get this stuff before the committee so we can actually know who's agreed to what because technically it's supposed to be us agreeing and we should know whether it's, is the sports boosters having it and that they have exclusive use of it. Where does that money go versus something else? Like we we should be part of these discussions. So when you do some research, I would like to see any agreements, verbal or nonverbal, just so we can know what's happening. The leagues, my personal opinion on the outdoor leagues with the grass, we have to maintain these for our kids anyway in the schools. We don't pay for city parks, you know, baseball and all that stuff. I personally think that we shouldn't be charging the Pop Warner League or the leagues for the grass fields. If they had a requirement for porta john, that's an expense too, you know. I've run a league before. It's not easy for these people to do this. So when you're looking at the turf fields, I think we should, do we have to do the charge to pay that money? But I think if there's anything we can do for the community and the kids would be to waive some of these fees. I understand that Mr. Pacheco doesn't have that authority, but I think as a committee, we could have a policy that says a community use for a league could request a waiver of those fees that we could vote on. Just like it has to go to the park board for, if somebody wants a permit for a field, we can weigh in and say, no, we think it should be $1,000 for the year or something, whatever the amounts are. But I think we have that authority to do that, but we can't then blame Mr. Pacheco when there's no money in the account. I think it's a balancing act. So I would support these fees, but with some sort of rebate or like a waiver of fees that this committee could do for community use such as Pop Warner on a grass, natural grass field and differentiate between the, you know, the turf fields, like out here. This field over here at CUS, you have to pay more to use this field than you would if it was at Fonsica. And I think that's what everybody would agree with. But I think we need to have a mechanism to support these leagues that pay taxes in the city and that we need to, and we need to make it easier for these leagues to exist, not more difficult. So I'm not going to support this unless there's some sort of mechanism that we can waive the fees for the nonprofit grass fields. With that, I yield.
Could I?
Who wants to go? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Doc.
Would it behoove that this discussion happened to go back to the subcommittee and and go over the a couple of the specific issues that were raised? Because in my experience doing this, there are, this is a, this is a standard set. And then there are some negotiated agreements. For example, the Falcons would pay X, even though it says Y, because that agreement's in place. There's a way to do that. But to, and there's also a way to have a process to do waive any fees on on grass and things as long as it's clear and what we talked about, like bathrooms and trash and those things. But in order, it's now May, so before June, if it went back to the subcommittee for further vetting to come up and bring it back before this committee in June, we could probably have that done and and take on the issue of Parkway Falcons and some of the other issues that were raised.
Yeah, that that kind of might make sense right now. Plus, we get a handle on who owns the equipment at
Yes.
at Durfee, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, maybe we can buy them out, Kenny, if the stuff's good, whatever they raised back in the day. I remember there was a fundraiser, like Paul said, by the boosters to buy that thing, so maybe we can work something out with that.
Sure. The only thing I was going to mention was that we could completely separate the two, the nonprofit community and the for-profit group. So there are there are leagues that come in to use baseball fields and soccer field that are not nonprofits.
Right.
They may pre-sell tickets. They may charge, you know, $1,000 for for someone to play in that league, like some of the AAU leagues. They obviously have the income to pay the price for the field, which would also help us offset the cost on the nonprofits, so.
Well, that's what Kevin and even Amy said, balance out what the money is.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Somebody mentioned a short time ago, well, how much do they pay their registration? I think it was you, Miss Almeida, Agia, sorry. But they, their fee is $125. But with that being said, as we all know, our inner city kids, a lot of them don't pay anything. That's the registration fee, but they give out a lot of scholarships. I think they gave out like 25 to like 50 scholarships last year with 250 kids in the league, you know. So the the need is there, the need for this league, the need for it to be in our city and at Durfee. I I wholeheartedly hope we come up with something that they can afford. I mean, I'm not asking, like, I'm not even asking. I'm just giving you information, but I think it's something that we have to think of moving forward. That's all. Thank you. I yield.
Just I want to comment how Mr. Pacheco said I would agree with him that if the league is a nonprofit league, so they can submit, if we had a system and they submit, an official nonprofit league, that would help us to determine, okay, we can give, either waive the fee or make mandate a porta john, whatever, you know, it would be a lot less than $35 an hour. Whereas if it's an AAU team or travel team, soccer and all this other stuff, then they can pay more. I would, I would agree the nonprofit pieces, and I'm assuming that Pop Warner is a nonprofit, like the little leagues are, I'm assuming. But I agree with you, Mrs. Larevee. We need to, that $125 fee doesn't cover anything that they need to do to to make the leagues. Same thing with baseball. You got to pay umpires an hour. It's unbelievable. We need to make it easier. So I agree with you, but the nonprofit piece would would be the key for me. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
I'm actually, can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Just with that being said, okay, it, yes, nonprofit, for-profit, all great and good, but we have to remember the, these, what about if they're our inner city kids, they're our Fall River Public School kids, you know what I mean? There's nonprofits that are from all over the place that can, that can come and rent our facilities. But we're talking this program, we're talking about our kids, our kids that attend our schools and live in our city. So I think that's how it differs a little bit as well with this league and with that, I yield.
Mr. Hudson?
That's what I was going to suggest is we don't have a category here for, we have community nonprofit, but we don't have community nonprofit youth. So maybe we have community nonprofit youth and its youth organizations such as the Falcons or Fall River Youth Soccer and they get the current rates and maybe their rates don't go up, but then we can increase all the rates effectively because it's not the students of Fall River anymore. Now it's outside agencies coming in, but we don't have to change those. So I'm going to withdraw my motion for that. I don't know if it needs a motion to go anywhere else, but for now, I'll yield.
I would say send it back to the committee, like suggested.
I just wanted to add to that, both of those comments, that I believe when the, in the regular park board, you have to show your rosters of who you have, so it's Fall River kids. So I think we should also identify Fall River because we could, Catch 22 could be a nonprofit from Somerset, let's say, coming in. So that Fall River, majority Fall River, whatever.
And the nonprofit certificate.
Correct, and I think that would help. So motion to refer back with those questions to the subcommittee.
Seconded.
Motion to refer back. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevee?
Yes.
Eric Coogan?
Yes. Kenny, again, discussion and vote to approve the audit of heating and ventilation school buildings is referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I have a motion to second.
So I I attached a rough idea from left field as to what we would be looking for in this audit. The the new buildings as well as the older buildings, when COVID hit, we knew that there were only certain things we could do within the confines of the equipment that we have. And it caused us to to do other things in order to make sure that our rooms were safe and comfortable for for our teachers and our students. What what we, I think we have an opportunity to do with the influx of of funds that have a certain earmark, and this is one of them, we can take a good hard look at all of the buildings and then basically prioritize those buildings and and decide just how much work we need to do in each of those buildings. Some of the buildings, it's it's a matter of operating systems that need to be upgraded. In other buildings, it's it's a little more than that, maybe unit ventilators in rooms. And then beyond that, some of the buildings, we're looking at some major renovations in order to looking at some major renovations in order to bring them up to today's standards. So what this will show us is all of our deficiencies in these buildings. And basically, it would give us a roadmap as to where we wanna move with all of our buildings. And I, and I think that without doing this, where we're just fixing the things that are happening and we're, we're doing a little bit, a little bit too much reaction and not enough, you know, proaction. So the PM that we're doing is what we have to do to keep our systems up and running. But some of this requires more than just PM. And this, these reports will do that for us. So we're looking for individual reports and I just attached some examples, pictures of things that, this, this is from schools in Hingham. But this is, this is just gonna give us a, a better understanding as to where our work is, where our heavy lifts are and where we can do some quick work on these buildings. And to improve the equality of air in the buildings, but also the efficiency.
Any questions? Mr. Corey?
So Ken, that's a huge undertaking. Who's, who provides the oversight at the school building itself to give you the information about how the HVAC's working?
So these would be licensed MEP professionals. So basically, these are, are individuals who do this kind of work, this forensic look at buildings and their operating systems for a living.
Okay, so they know what to look for, but how often are they in the city to inspect our buildings?
So this would be a one-time inspection, and they would give us the laundry list of what needs to be done in each building. And then from that point, we would come up with a strategic plan as to how we're gonna attack all of this work and allow us to budget, you know, long-term, where we wanna be with all of these items. And this, this look inside some of the equipment is well beyond PM work. And that's where I think that, over the years, financially, we didn't have the ability to do.
Right. And we won't have the monstrosity of the old Durfee building to worry about any longer.
Thank goodness.
That was a real headache. And that was an ongoing headache. We won't have that headache anymore, so we'll have a lot of breathing room to oversee all our other buildings.
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
This proposal, is this have to go out to bid? Is this a project that we can do without?
This is a project that I can do without going out to bid, and I'm trying to capitalize on the economy of scale. These people are already in the city.
Yep. Yeah, I just was curious if it was like a proposal that they, then we still have to go out to bid, or can we just?
We can use this proposal. We can use this proposal to consulting purposes and they'll, they'll provide us with written reports.
As long as it's legal by that, I support it. It's definitely something we need and it'll give us a roadmap. So thank you. I yield.
Nothing further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Finally, discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report is presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Motion to approve in a second. Any questions for Mr. Almeida? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, the, I tried to see the, the totals. Is there the healthcare line on here somewhere?
It is. It's on, it's on the second page.
Can you just, what is that looking like now, the projection?
As, as of this projection, as of May 5th, it's about $1.3 million.
To the good?
Yes.
Well, that's a good chunk of money. The, I was waiting to see on the, on the agenda. We talked in the past about budgets and the current budget and then about, I think it was at least two months ago now, when we had the presentations. I made the motion at that time to increase, to, to spend the grant fund so that we could start hiring people, but it wasn't on the agenda again. So I'm looking for some guidance on, we have money in here, I guess we're gonna have surplus money, according to this. But when are we gonna actually bring forth so that we can have, actually have principals start hiring and making the moves for next year? We're already in May.
Great, great question, Kevin. We're, we've, we've had these discussions and the issue is, it's, you still have to wait till the final budget gets approved.
Even on the grants?
Well.
Like, I thought we had 20 million or whatever that's sitting there that we can spend it on.
Oh, we have a lot. We.
At least.
Right now, we have 20 million. We're gonna get another 40 or whatever it is. But so, so, so if the committee's will is to spend early and fill all the positions that we have, that we put in the operating budget, using the grant funds as the, as the collateral, if you will, to do that, we would go ahead and do it. We just didn't wanna bring forward positions, not that for hire, knowing that the final budget wasn't set yet.
Yep. I, I mean, I, I wanted to do it two months ago. I think when we're looking at May, the next meeting's in June, you know, I personally think having knowledge of how the schools run and how everybody's trying to gather up hiring and all that, I would like to authorize, we've done this in the past, you to fill these positions so that we can actually have principals start locking in talent now. We, we wait till June.
Well, we, we don't disagree with you, Kevin. We're on this, we're on the same, this is an issue that you and I.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that. I like that, yeah.
Right? So the question is, you know, we're trying to use sound financial practices, which we've, which we've used. And I understand, I would like to support my principals to be able to do that. So if the committee gives us the go-ahead, we would do that and you'd see a bunch of positions on the next agenda.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve all the budget, all new positions, including those on the wish list grant, whatever the terminology was for that. I think it's like 1.8 million.
On top of it?
Yeah.
Well, I, we can definitely fund it. I mean, that, that would.
Yeah, if we can fund it, I think as a committee.
It's Christmas, Christmas in May.
I mean, I think it's, it's, I mean, I'll speak for myself. I think it's urgent for us to, we're sitting on the pot of money. We, we have principals that wanna make some actions. Let's just go for it. And then we have the money to back us up. If you have to adjust, nobody's gonna come down here and say, oh, you're, you're off by 200, 300,000. We're sitting on 20 million. Let's do it.
Kevin, you're not gonna hear me say I disagree with you.
I agree.
Seconded. Motion.
Motion seconded.
I seconded.
Anything further?
Nope.
Oh, he had a right.
Anything further?
Nope.
Call the roll, Deb?
No, no, I'm sorry.
I just said anything further, two times.
Yeah, I do have one question. In the line items, Kevin, guidance salaries. No, 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 I'm sorry. No, this in regard to this.
Yep.
After you take the vote, go come back.
Alright, thanks. Take the vote.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa, Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
No.
Can't afford it?
Right now.
Mr. Corey, go ahead.
I do, but not now.
I got it.
Okay, so Kev, in these line items, under guidance, does that all to include adjustment?
It does, yes. It's, it's all, it's all councils.
That they're all in one department, considered one department?
They're in that one line item, for guidance councils.
Yeah. But they're in that line item?
Yes, sir.
That's all I needed, you know, I yield.
Anything further, Kevin?
Just one question on the legal services. That, I turned it sideways again, but I think it's 300,000?
Yep.
And I think at the council, the joint meeting, you had indicated that that was not all salaries for attorneys. That was.
There's money, there's money there to pay legal costs.
Do you know offhand, or can you get us what the totals are budgeted for each, the ones we know, like so, an individual versus the, or breakdown of that 300,000? If you can get something to us via the superintendent, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Put it in Friday's email.
Thank you. I yield.
Nothing further? Okay.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of items for your information.
Motion to approve.
Put place on file.
Seconded.
I have a motion to second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee this time? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Seconded.
Seconded. Deb, please call the roll.
Attorney Sadek.
Oh, I'm sorry, read them first. I'm sorry, ready?
National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve the executive session committee minutes for the April 12, 2021, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to workers' compensation litigation regarding Steven Orlando versus the School Department. Board number, Board Docket Number 027294-19, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the city, of the school department. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service, civil service clerical employees, the Fall River School System, represented by the Fall River Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the Fall River Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional teaching employees, the Fall River School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Fall River Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding anticipated litigation by a school administrative official, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel, including without limitation, Dahlia Joseph Albana, instructional support liaison. We will reconvene. There may, may not be statements at that time.
Um, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. We're gonna go right in as soon as the room's cleared and we'll get the executive session going. I'll go ahead and test it then. Ready? Go. Back in session. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes. Anything further to come before the committee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for April 12, 2021.
I have a motion, second discussion, none. Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes.
A motion to approve the MOA between the Fall River Federation of Paraprofessionals and the Fall River School Committee as negotiated.
Yes. Uh, seconded.
I have a motion to second, discussion, none. Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes.
Another motion to approve level four MOA between Watson and the Fall River School Committee as negotiated.
Seconded.
A motion to second. Any discussion? Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?